They don't interrupt and you don't get embarrassed. So anyway, roll call please.
Richardson.
Here.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we have the prayer, we're going to have a special presentation. Garza, come on up and join me. And Pastor Peterson, will you come to that? We're going to honor Pastor Darrell Peterson for his 34 years organizing the invocation for the city council meetings. That's a long time and a very faithful servant. Garza has a few words and then I'm going to read a proclamation and then Darrell, you can have the invitation.
Darrell, step up here if I may, please. Well Darrell, here we are.
Here we are.
Darrell, I wanted to make sure I say something to you. When I became the Southeast District Representative, you came up to me and you said, "Anything you need, I'm here." And you were. I really appreciate your help. I really appreciate you being involved as a citizen of Hutchinson, Kansas, in interest of what you do. I really appreciate you doing with the kids. He had a zone. He was the curator, the boss of the zone for kids that went to after school. And I really appreciate that Darrell. And most of all, I really appreciate you being my friend. And this is hard on me because you've been my friend for so long. You know, Darrell is the kind of person that if you need anything, he's there. In my lowest times in being a city commissioner, I used to call Darrell. You know, I called him quite a bit. And he's always there for me. He's always there for prayer. He's always there all the time. And that's the kind of citizens we need in Hutchinson. We need people to be involved like Darrell. And if we don't get involved, we're never going to change anything. So at this point, I asked him if I could talk and tell Darrell that I really appreciate his help. And you are a number one citizen. If we had a number one citizen award, you'd be the man. Congratulations over here, Tom.
Well, I will say that Darrell handed me a note a month or two ago and his, my response to him was, "You have to find your replacement," which he's done. So do you have any words you want to say? I'll tell you what. Let me read this proclamation. You can ask the blessing on our meeting and then you can have the mic. All right? Whereas since 1990, through his selfless service, Pastor Darrell Peterson has shown exceptional commitment and leadership through his presence at city council meetings. Whereas Pastor Peterson has dedicated his time, energy, and efforts to improving the quality of life within our community. Don't do that. Whereas the dedication and work of individuals like Pastor Peterson make our community stronger, more vibrant place for all of us to live, work, and thrive. And whereas now, therefore, I Greg Vass, on behalf of the City of Hutchinson, do hereby extend my heartfelt gratitude and appreciation to Darrell Peterson for his outstanding service and contribution to our community. And we commend and thank him for the lasting impact made through his service. And we look forward to the continued positive influence of his work. Thank you.
Thank you. God bless you. I understand there's no time limit. Is that correct? This is a great honor. And don't worry, I won't shed tears too much. But it's really an honor for me to be here and the representation of the city council and the city mayor and even the attorney. Praise God for him. We've did a lot of things over the years. I've been on the planning commission for two terms and what have you, but that's not it. It's, I have a heart for the city. And the heart that I have is that we're able to let God do what he wants to do. Because God can do things that you can't do, you don't know, you don't understand, but God will tell you what to do. And you know what? Too many cities, and this city is run this way at different times. They run it by the flesh and they don't understand what they're doing. And they do things and they do it wrong. And then they wonder why, what's wrong? You know, it's kind of like digging a hole in the middle of a street and you wonder why you got to bounce there, you know? We got to learn to listen, talk to people, and to do things. And you've all done such a fabulous job. Fabulous job. And Father, I just thank you for this day. It's a blessed day. And I thank you, Lord God, for the opportunity of a lifetime for me. And I just thank you for all the things that you've blessed me with. But I thank you for this city and for the leadership that's in this city today, that Father God, we can stand, we can stand strong and be proud of what's taken place. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you Darrell. Next item, please. This is the time when you can share with the council members anything you would like to talk about with us. Sounds like I have an echo. It does need to be germane to the City of Hutchinson. If you, you'll have five minutes. We have a counter and we'll, we'd be happy to listen to anything you might want to address the council with. If it's, if it's on the agenda tonight, please wait until the agenda time. All right. Look, we have a taker.
Always wanted to say I'm here for open mic night. Thanks for switching this to evening times. Lacey Mills and I am representing the Reno County Childcare Task Force and wanted to just give you an update. I am definitely not the expert. I'm representing information for Heather Faulkner today. Is there anything else that I need to state before I get started?
Your address, phone number. No, I'm just.
Okay, I'll just keep going then. So what I wanted to do was just give you guys an update in light of the fact that the city and the county has been supporting ARPA funds for childcare work specifically. It has been our goal as the Reno County Childcare Task Force to update the council on the work that's happening because of those funds. And we have invested a lot of dollars, not a lot of dollars, but a lot of effort into making sure that we are communicating how those dollars are being invested in the community. I think it's important for not only the council and the mayor and the city to know that, but also our community. So on our website, we have a pretty robust selection of information that is available to the community that if they wanted to go and take a look at that, they can see that. I think the thing that's important to note is that the work that we're doing is really based on data that we're finding throughout the investment that we're making through our daycare providers, both childcare centers and home providers. What I wanted to bring to you guys today, two things. The first one is our quarterly update. Can I pass these out?
Sure.
Can I start down here? So I will not read all of this because I know I'm on a time limit. But I think the biggest thing to point out on this update is if you look at the chart or the graph on the top right, the important thing that I would note here is we started doing our work as a task force through ARPA funding in 2022. So you can see that the slots or the number of providers, excuse me, were at 70 for home providers and at 10 in 2020. And we saw that start to decline. It stayed stable for centers, but we were seeing a decline. 2022, we started investing those ARPA funds into the community. And you can see how we've made a shift and we're starting to trend back up in the number of providers that we're retaining, which means retain slots in the community and also increasing the number of centers that are also providing childcare in the community. So that is the biggest thing. On the back, you can find any of the information about work that's happened in the past quarter with ARPA funding. The other thing that I wanted to just point out to you guys is, oh, she has a note here for me. The other thing to say is that data comes out once a year, so it will come back out in January. You've probably seen this before from us, but this was right after the meeting that we presented to y'all in January. So once we get that updated number, we will show that to you, but we're projecting to see a continuance of climb in that. So the last thing that I thought would be helpful for this group to see is the slot expansion in Reno County. So I think that this is really telling to be able to see the number of slots that have been created in Reno County and the City of Hutchinson because of those ARPA dollars that we've been receiving in the community the last couple of years. And I love that this breaks it down by location, outline communities, as well as providers within the City of Hutchinson itself. But through the funding that we've received, 417 slots have been created for childcare in our community because of those dollars, and that's over 12 different locations. So, and there's a lot of work that's getting ready to happen and in progress as well. But I would encourage you to follow our website if you don't already, RenoCountyChildCare.com. And we'll have an annual report coming out, I'm assuming probably first part of January. So that's it. Thank you for your time.
Lacey, one question. Are the slots all full or can people usually find a spot for their child?
So again, not the expert in childcare, but I think it's going to depend on different locations. So I know that we were just talking to USD 313 and they do have some openings at Crusader Corner. I know that Haven is pretty full. I think it varies by the location and some of the strategies that were put in place by the different childcare centers. I know that 313 was trying to support their staff and allow opportunities for staff to be able to have a slot for their kiddos. And now that that has passed, they're opening that up to the community. So I'm guessing that there won't be many open for very long.
All right.
So good question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else this evening? Chief?
Good evening. Bryce Burley, Police Chief. I asked if I could go now because I wanted Lacey to be up here with me when I, when I talk about this next topic that I would like to bring up real quick. And it's in relation to a community resource guide. When I became Police Chief, I've been in the city, I've been in the department for about 25 years. And I knew about a lot of resources that we had in this community. But a lot of the resources that I was aware of was more directed towards actual like law enforcement. For example, the Bright House for domestic violence, maybe taxi rides home from the jail once individuals would bond out of there, things of that nature. As I started to grow out of the positions I've been in before and start meeting with different community members, I realized that we have a ton of resources in this community, more than I ever knew of before. And law enforcement obviously touches, touches a lot of people's lives on a daily basis and not necessarily in a negative way as far as arrests or tickets or things like that. Just meeting with individuals who might be in need of homes, might be in need of food, shelter, those type of things. And we'll get asked those questions, but we don't always have the right answers for them. But knowing what I know now is that we have, the city has a tremendous amount of resources. So we had our own resource guide. I know the Hutchinson Fire Department had their own resource guide. And then meeting with Lacey, they had their own resource guide. So I thought instead of us just having all of our own individual resource guides, could we, Lacey and I collaborate and come up with one resource guide, which I'll pass these over here so you guys can take a look at that. As you'll notice on the front of the resource guide, it has our trademarks, HFD, HPD, City of Hutchinson, and then the United Way. So Lacey and I began working together and I got to give Lacey all the credit. She did all the legwork to this thing. I just, I guess the idea came and then Lacey was all about it and wanted to jump on it and help with this. So she built it out. We took it back. I presented it to all the department heads to see if they found that the list was current, accurate, had all the resources that basically this city provides. And we're all in agreement that that is the list of everything that we have available here in the city. The next step is to, now that it's been approved by all department heads, Lacey, HFD, everybody here in the city, what we'll do is we'll forward it out in a digital format to all departments. And then all departments can make their own copies and printouts and then put them in like city work trucks. If they're out pushing snow and they see somebody that's in need, there's a resource guide for them. We'll put them in all the police cars to be able to hand out and direct people in the right places. Fire trucks, et cetera, et cetera. And then what we'll do is we'll make this a yearly occurrence to make sure that we keep it up to date and current. We had the idea of, I don't want to talk too long here. This, I don't want to go too far off. But we had the idea of like having a QR reader where people can use the phone and do that. But I thought it lacked the personal touch, being able to actually show it to them, explain it to them. I know Lacey's got even bigger ideas and I'll let her talk about that here in a second. So we're going to start with this, but we are looking at possibly doing a QR reader that will take it to a link. And then also one in Spanish. We'd like to see that come out. That's our, one of our next goals moving forward. So anyways, I don't want to take up all this time. I want to show you the resource guide, how the city's going to utilize it and how we're going to try to push out the information to the public to make sure that they're aware of all these resources available so they can be best helped inside the city.
Opened mic twice in one night. I think I'll keep it short, but I'm so grateful that Chief Burley opened the opportunity for collaboration on this. I think at United Way, we see every day that there is a gap between people understanding how to access the resources. We have a lot of really fabulous resources in our community. But sometimes I think when you are in crisis, it is hard to think through where to turn and where to look. I think that's oftentimes why United Way Salvation Army end up being one of those first phone calls. And so I love that Chief Burley was looking to collaborate and create something that could be consistently dispersed into the community so folks could find resources. But I think the other important piece in my opinion on this is I think the lift sometimes for officers or firemen, firewomen, as they're out on calls, it can be heavy to try to understand how to send somebody in a direction when you don't understand what that looks like. And so I think in talking to Chief Burley, our goal was to be able to help take that lift with Reno connections. Just, you know, United Way is here to serve the community and you, we can help take that load for somebody and be a good partner. And so I'm grateful for the opportunity to collaborate on this. And yes, give me all the QR codes and all of the things in the future. We'll put them everywhere. So thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Appreciate your work. Anybody else? All right. Hearing none. We'll move along. Next item?
Item number six, consent agenda.
All right. Has everybody had a chance to look at that?
I have a question about the consent agenda, item H. Is this the last of the ARPA funds for us to use up? That's the Meyer landmark.
That was, okay. I want to explain.
I believe we have, Angela Richard, Finance Director, I believe we have a little bit left with the Housing Commission that they are spending. And then we have the amount that's assigned to Woody Seat and the amount that's assigned to United Way for childcare. And so since those are obligated funds, we do, they're obligated by the end of the year and we'll have until the end of 2026 to spend those.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Nope.
Motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Martha?
Yes.
Major?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next item?
Item number seven, public hearing. The public hearing could consider a structure to be unsafe and dangerous. 3405 East Fourth Avenue.
I'd make a motion to open the public hearing. I'll second it.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Major?
Yes.
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 Good evening, council. Jason Lady, building official. Sounds good. Thank you. So to get started, this is a public hearing for an unsafe and dangerous structure at 3405 East Fourth Avenue. On November 5th, the council approved a resolution setting a public hearing for today for the condemnation or order to repair the structure located at 3405 East Fourth Avenue. Just to go over the public hearing procedures, staff presentation and recommendation is where we'll start. Then questions for staff, owner representative presentation, questions for the owner and representatives, public comment, and then we will close the public hearing and then we will have the motion on the proposed resolution by the city council. And I believe that's 8A on the agenda. So staff presentation, just to give a little bit of background on this property. So the property was originally a machine shop, later used for design and assembly of wind turbines. In June of 2010, there was a letter sent by the fire chief at the time outlining the code requirements pertaining to the storage of wheat and obtaining a certificate of occupancy for the structure, which included a sprinkler system certified and operational, fire detection system, and the power be restored to the building. On 21 September 2010, in a letter as part of a special use permit, staff, staff reported planning commission, Todd Harmon of ADM Grain states his understanding of what is required to obtain a special use permit. His list includes a sprinkler system certified as operational by an approved company, a fire detection system supplied and installed by an approved vendor, and power restored to the building. Then on 5 October 2010, a special use permit at 3405 East Fourth was approved by the city council for storage of dry wheat. The conditions of the approval included a new electrical service and associated equipment, a fire alarm system, and for fire protection system must be installed, operational, and inspected by the building official and fire chief. There are no records of any building permits or inspections that would coincide with the SUP to indicate or support the fact that the property was brought into compliance at that time as required by the SUP. There are also no records that a certificate of occupancy was ever granted. The grain was removed from the facility in approximately 2013. The exact time is unknown on that. The owner may have a little bit more detail on when the grain was removed from that facility. Then on 30 March 2021, Mr. Razor submitted an application. And he, Mr. Razor is the tenant of this facility at this moment. Submitted an application for an updated certificate of occupancy. In June 2021, a center was, a letter was sent from the inspection department to Mr. Razor notifying him that his business was being illegally operated and could not occupy the structure. The permit was voided due to no communication at that time with Mr. Razor. Fast forward to 20 May of 2024, there was a partial collapse of the south end of the structure. A strong windstorm hit Hutchinson is believed to be the cause of that partial collapse. On 11 July 2024, the structure was deemed unsafe and dangerous and was boarded up following a visit by the interim building official and the fire marshal. On 17 July 2024, an onsite meeting that included the building owner, tenant, interim building official, and the fire marshal, all commercial activity at the building. building official, and the fire marshal, all commercial activity at the building was to cease. No customers were to be allowed in, and the deadline of November 1 was given to completely vacate all product from the building. On 17 July, just went over that, to October 2024 is when I made my first visit out to the site, as I came on as the building official with the city. For October 2024, apologies, I'm clicking the mouse instead of the keyboard. On 4 October 2024, a meeting was held between myself, the fire marshal, the director of community development, the city manager, the building owner, and the tenant. November 1 deadline to completely vacate the building was reiterated and a follow-up letter was sent to the owner and the tenant. During that time frame, staff met with Mr. Razor, Mr. Devaney, and legal counsel to discuss options regarding the structure. 1 November 2024, the deadline to completely vacate the building originally given on July 17th deadline was not met. The tenant continued to slowly remove or vacate the building through what staff deems or has considered to be normal business operations. On 5 November 2024, a resolution setting a hearing date for an unsafe and dangerous structure on December 17th was approved. And here we are today, December 17th, for this public hearing. So this is the structure we're talking about at 3405 East Fourth Avenue. Just to go over a few things, this is going to go over the same thing we went during the last meeting, but this is the south end, the collapsed portion of the structure. A few things I want to hit on tonight is that the majority of the structure, the electrical system has been stripped. There's no lighting, emergency lighting, exit lighting. There are also multiple broken doors, broken windows, blocked doors, blocked pass of egress within this structure. The building has been broken. The building has been broken into and stripped of all of its wiring. There is no water service to the building, no active fire sprinkler system, or no active fire alarm system. Most important, the business is in operating illegally is it has never received a certificate of occupancy to occupy the structure. Also, property taxes are currently delinquent. There are multiple years. And we have had multiple nuisance violations since 2013, which is in your, there's a list of those in your staff report. When a property comes so bad that it is an unsafe and dangerous structure to the community, the city can condemn the property and require it to be repaired or demolished. 3405 East Fourth Avenue is a blight on the city of Hutchinson, and all these factors I've described to you have led to staff declaring the structure as an unsafe and dangerous structure as defined by the city ordinance. I'm going to walk through a few photos of the current condition of the structure as well as the current use of the structure. So these are the same, some of the same photos that we went through to establish this public hearing. But this is anterior views to the southwest. The building has collapsed. This is again the east side of the interior viewing to the south. This is the collapsed portion viewing west. It's a close-up view to the southwest. And again, this is all on the south portion of the building where there was an addition some years ago. I do not know the exact date of that addition, but. Little bit of the west wall, you can see some of the conditions of the west wall where the wall is pulling away from the roof structure as well as some of that flexing of the wall, cracking of the CMU. Little bit more of the west wall from the other side. This is what the warehouse currently looks like on the inside. So we had, we had given an original date of 1 November to vacate the property and to remove all the product out of the, out of the structure. During that timeframe and setting the public hearing, we sent an actual notice of violation. So we sent a notice of violation on the 17th July. And then we sent a updated notice of violation describing, just really describing the actual city ordinances that were being broken, the actual property maintenance code that we needed to address, that were the issues with this structure. So on 1 November, we sent a, a follow-up notice of violation and we gave till 1 December to vacate the building at that point. 1 December is passed and we allowed them to continue to December 17th, being that the meeting was being held tonight. So on my visit out to the warehouse this last week, you can see the west side of the warehouse. There's quite a bit of dirt still left in the warehouse. And in fact, from when I was out there a month ago, there's probably more dirt. Well, I can say that there is more dirt on the west side of the warehouse today than there was a month ago. So that leads to me to believe through, you know, my professional opinion is that they're continuing to remove this through normal means of operation as opposed to really vacating the warehouse. This again is the west side of the warehouse. This is the east side of the warehouse. This is where, I guess where we consider the worm beds on the east side of the warehouse. You can see that from, this is from, looking from south to north. Again, the east side of the warehouse looking south to the north and the worm beds. This is a southeast property along Airport Road. There's been a lot of dirt moved in there. It's also in the staff report that this is in violation of city code as well when we talk about the zoning violations. So originally in the original SUP, it was noted, also in the 2021 certificate of occupancy where Mr. Razor was denied occupancy at that time, it was noted that there was to be no outside storage. And so these are photos from this week and we have outside storage. Another photo southeast of the property, looking along from the vantage point of Airport Road out there. You also see a letter presented by the owner. Should have a copy of that, you all should have a copy of that letter from Landmark Architects, which states the building is a type 2B construction, classified as an F2 use that is low hazard industrial. The structure is approximately 34,000 square feet. If you take a look at that in the building code and that type 2B construction for an F1 structure, the limited area amount of that building should be 20,000 square feet. Now, that area, that building does have a lot of frontage onto it, so there is a calculation that can be done by an architect, design professional, that can give a frontage increase. But even with that frontage increase, 34,000 or 340,000 square feet would be well over what that frontage increase would give. Landmark determined to be an unlimited area building. Staff disagrees with this because it doesn't meet the provisions of 507.3 for an unlimited area building. So an unlimited area building must have 60 feet of space on all sides. So based on our review of the code and taking a look at the structure and, and the conditions of the site, we would determine that the building does require a full sprinkler system. So here's a little bit of what the structure looks like in relation to the structure next door. When you measure that 60 feet of frontage on any building, you're taking a look, and I'll get to it a little more on my other slide, on my next slide. But you're taking a look at 60 feet from all sides, all portions of the building to determine an unlimited area building. So you can see from the property line is where you're going to measure. And the property line in between those two buildings, you can see from the property line is approximately 25 feet to that side of the building from the property line, if we're looking right there. And the worst part of it is down here, at this point of the property line, you're looking at 15 feet from this property line to that portion of the building right there. So this is a little commentary figure for 507.2, and this is how you determine open space for an unlimited area building. And you can see that how the ICC determines, that's the International Code Council, for those that are maybe unaware, but in the building code, this is how you determine 60 to 60 feet, no matter where you're at on any portion of the building. And anything facing the front would go to the center of the street So now I'm going to give an opportunity for the fire marshal to come up and make some
Good evening, council. I'm Kane, Fire Marshal, City of Hutchinson Fire Department. Ditto, basically. I'm going to fill in some of the timeline associated with this. I guess for this go-around with this building, my office started all of this. So in May of, May of 2023, that was our first attempt to contact Fed and Happy. My inspector, Inspector Dowling, was driving by and saw vehicles out there. So he stopped and went to conduct a routine fire and life safety inspection of the building. Building supervisor Merle Miller told Inspector Dowling that he would rather owner Dan Razor be there to go through, so no inspection took place. Inspector Dowling made an attempt to call Mr. Razor, set something up, and was told that Mr. Razor told him he was walking into court and he would need to call back. So Inspector Dowling called the next week, received no answer. He called again the next week, and Mr. Razor said he was going into court again and couldn't talk. Two weeks later, he made another, another attempt to call and got no answer. So on July 20th of 2023, Inspector Dowling returned to the building. He met with Merle Miller again. At this time, Inspector Dowling informed him that a life safety inspection of the building would take place on October 9th of 2023. On the morning of August 9th, Merle called Inspector Dowling and told him that Dan was not going to be at the meeting and asked him to move it back. The meeting was rescheduled for September 5th. It was during this time, from the first attempts to call and schedule it with Mr. Razor, until the September 5th actual inspection, that we found out that, that he had, there was no certificate of occupancy to occupy or run a business out of this building. So we contacted the building department and all of the inspectors were at the building on September 5th. This, this is the true jumping off point for this building. September 5th and the fact that there is absolutely no legal being in that building, be it, be it a business or, or an individual. He did not go through any of the steps to get authorization to run a business out of that building. So the inspection was conducted on September 5th, and it was conducted by all the, all the inspectors, the city building department, and fire department, community risk reduction division. Mr. Razor was once again absent from the inspection. Mr. Miller walked through with the inspectors and a copy of the inspection report from my office was provided to Mr. Miller and emailed to Mr. Razor, along with the list of 11 sprinkler companies that routinely work in this area. Violations from our office included blocked exits, inoperable exits, no exit signs, no emergency lighting, no records of maintenance for the existing sprinkler system, the alarm system, or the fire extinguishers. That's not an all-inclusive list. Those are the major points. No contact was made with any city department after the inspection. On October 5th, which was the 30-day mark of the inspection, Inspector Dowling emailed Mr. Razor and asked for an update. The response was, I'll give you a call today. Mr. Razor then sent an email that evening of the 5th stating that he had child issues and would call tomorrow. Inspector Dowling replied, he knew Mr. Razor was busy, so just an email update would, would suffice. Three days later, Mr. Razor, Mr. Razor told Inspector Dowling that the issues were being taken care of and that a meeting with the city was set for later that month. Inspector Dowling asked again for a status of the issues so he could update his file and received no further communication. At this time, I was told by the fire chief that there was in fact a meeting in the works involving the chamber, city council, and influential people from a local country club. On October 30th, I was sent a meeting invite for November 28th. November 28, 2023 came and went with no meeting. Inspector Dowling went back to the facility that day and found that no work to mitigate any of the issues had been done. Mr. Miller told Inspector Dowling that he was informed by Mr. Razor that he was working it through the city, and I was again informed by the fire chief to take a holding pattern and see where the chamber involvement took this. I then received correspondence between the chamber and Mary Grace. Mary Grace had to ask a series of questions that needed answered after the canceled meeting. The responses at that time were consistent with what we had been receiving all along, only that the issues were being addressed, but nothing specific. I was again told to sit and see where things were headed with the city. After no communication, on January 25th, Inspector Dowling again emailed Mr. Razor for an update on any progress. Mr. Razor only answered with, I will be in town next week and get you updated. There was no further communication. On February 13th, I received a letter from Firetronics, the alarm company. And as per code, when a company stops servicing or monitoring a premises, they have to notify the local authority. So this letter from Firetronics was to inform us that they had discontinued service with Fed and Happy. I relayed this information to all other city departments. I was again told we were in a holding pattern to see what the city was going to do with meetings and such. On June 7th, Inspector Dowling made me aware of a social media post advertising products produced by Fed and Happy, along with hours of operation and an invitation to come purchase the products. It was at this time the decision was made to leave the holding pattern and move on this, the point at which the public was now being allowed in the building. It was also at this time we learned the collapse of the south, south end of the building. The decision was made to move, mitigate the public risk of the building. Inspector Dowling visited the facility again on June 24th, and Mr. Miller and Mr. Razor were again provided a copy of this report. Consultation was held over the following weeks with city staff. The decision was made to shut down the building and restrict access. Contact was made on the morning of July 10th with Merle Miller, at which time he was informed the building was going to be secured and operations were to cease. He said they had personal effects that they needed to get out. They were allowed to get in, get their personal effects out. And the building was boarded up and gates locked with city locks. Subsequent meetings with Mr. Razor took place after this date, at which time Mr. Razor was instructed to remove the product from the building and there was to be normal production. Every deadline has come and gone with no resolution. Production still takes place. Sales are still being made. Customers are still picking up products. There's been no plan presented to my office or the city, as far as I'm aware, to fix anything. I've been contacted by no sprinkler or alarm companies to discuss any plan of action. My office has gotten the same answers for over a year, and the stonewalling is now spreading to other city departments and outside agencies. There is a thriving, truly multimillion dollar business in the adjacent building. KMS has done everything within their power to bring all aspects of their building up to code, whether that's been electrical, mechanical, building, and yes, fire code. to code, whether that's been electrical, mechanical, building, and yes, fire code. They have expressed their concerns on more than one occasion about having a building such as this so close and everything associated with it. Now, as we focus on what we always focus on, a sprinkler system. I'll, I'll defer back to the, the building department to cover all the other outstanding issues with the building. There is an opinion out that will be called upon, it already has, from an architect that questions the need for a sprinkler system. Sarah Sype is an outstanding architect, and I re- I respect her opinions greatly. However, without talking to her, I can only, I can only guess that she rendered her opinion on whether the building needed a sprinkler system and stopped at that point. What's not covered in her letter is this poses even more significant problems for this building and for this owner, as Mr. Lady brought up. It would mean a wall between the two that would need to be a three-hour wall. This would, this would have to go the length of the building, and also the existing, existing sprinkler system, the sprinkler system that is already in that building that just needs to be updated would then need to be removed. So if he doesn't want a sprinkler system, it will have to be removed. Since July, the city has been waiting for a plan, just something that says things are getting worked on or there's gonna be progress. The established pattern has continued, the only answers are that the issues are being taken care of. Even the smallest things, like just servicing the extinguishers, would be an act of good faith, but to date, those still haven't been touched, the simplest thing. It has been said this is just another attempt to stop a small local business. Again, to date, this business has still not contacted the city about the process of obtaining a certificate of occupancy, so it's operating illegally from the start. As the fire marshal for the City of Hutchinson, it's my duty to apply the code fairly and evenly to all businesses in the city. So by letting this continue, the only ones I'm not being fair to are all the actual legal businesses in town that follow the rules. So my question is, what's next? We move forward with letting them continue, what do I tell the company next door? What do I tell KMS that has done everything right and is right next door? What do we tell anyone in the future that wants to open a business? What are the future of the inspections here in Hutchinson? Do we follow the codes, or is it now just the International Book of Suggestions, the two thousand eighteen edition? Division Chief of Operations for the Hutchinson Fire Department, Jeremy Unruh, will discuss the dangers to the responders. Thank you.
Evening, council. I'm Jeremy Unruh, Operations Chief for the Hutchinson Fire Department. Fire Marshal and Mr. Lady did a great job explaining code and compliance. I just wanted to share a couple of statements to maybe share a different perspective of our concern for this building. One of our jobs is to consistently, consistently evaluate risk in our community and to our citizens. Many of these issues happen to be stirred up by building inspections like this one, others are through past incidents or pre-planning. A basic principle we follow on a building, evaluating a building or a process is we ask ourselves, would we risk a lot to save a lot? We risk a little to save a little. The heart of that message says that if the risk is too high for losing firefighters, to save something that has no chance of surviving, we're gonna have to make that decision to not place our men and women in danger. It's not a common situation, but whatever you, what you've heard today, we've made that decision. And since midsummer, if there were to be a significant incident such as a fire, the fire department's stance is this is a no-entry building. I'm not gonna put my firefighters at risk. All of our activities will be exterior-based with priority to protect the building to the west, which is KMS. If you remember our Fourth Street mattress fire this summer, it's a great example of what can happen when there's a fire in a building that is not in compliance with the fire code or building codes. This fire became significant very quickly and burnt multiple businesses and buildings that were over a hundred feet away. And I bring this up because at its closest point, this building in question is within twenty-five feet to thirty-seven feet of an operating, functioning, compliant building. This building has blocked exits, no operational sprinkler system, no fire alarm system, nor clear means of, no clear means of egress, no electricity, has open pits with no fall protection, and on top of all that, there's the structural collapse portion. And if anybody with a little bit of a mechanical aptitude knows that when a truss or a piece of steel is not in correct position, the force is transferred somewhere else, causing other issues. And we in the fire service know that with one truss fails, multiple will fail behind it. So I'd like for you guys to visualize a couple of things for me. Airport Road is a common corridor into the city, and as you cross the bridge just south of Fourth Street, this building is your first view. The first view is the collapsed structure, and the rest of the view is the state of disrepair. And I would, I would also like you to imagine First, First and Main Street, okay, First National Bank. I want you to picture all the customers walking in and out the front door, all the people that work in this building. Now imagine if there was no fire suppression system, no alerting equipment, blocked exits, no means of egress, and the front entryway that you walk in is, is disrepair, the building's falling apart, and yet people are coming in there. Would you allow this, and would you have allowed it for a year and a half?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Enrico Viega, City Manager. As part of this discussion, I felt that it would be helpful for clarity for everyone in the room and those that may be listening. There's a lot of issues at play here, a lot of concerns at play, and the easiest way to decipher what is going on is to recognize that there are two separate and unique entities. One is the entity that should, that is the business, and then the entity that is the property owner. And so our issues are with the property owner and not the business owner. Now, it's obvious that the use of the facility or the business that, that is happening in the facility can trigger certain requirements, but the issue at hand is still with the business or with the property. And so I just wanted to add that context there, that the, the bit, the business of today is really to, I really get after the property and not the worm business itself. So just for clarity.
I think Fire made a very good point, too, that we have a thriving business next door, and you know, that thriving business is in substantial compliance is what the city required them to do with that building, bring their fire suppression system up to code, bring the fire alarm system up to code, properly egress and, and you know, all the things that would be required of any building that any staff is working in, any public's coming into, and protecting not only the members of the community that are working in these buildings, but protecting members of the community that come into these buildings for, for the business. So with that, I'll give you our staff determination from what we determined as a city staff. So city staff have inspected and declared the structure at thirty-four oh five, East Fourth Avenue to be an unsafe and does dangerous structure as defined in Chapter twenty-one, Article seven, unsafe and dangerous buildings of the building regulations as adopted by the City of Hutchinson. I would like to make note real quick before we have the owner and the open representative, first of all, we'll take questions to city staff from you all, and then, but I would like to make just a couple more comments. Should the city council condemn the structure, there is an option per the city ordinance to require property owners who request to complete the demolition or repair of their own building to provide a cash bond in the amount of the estimated cost to demolish the structure. Our estimated cost of demolition for this structure goes to about a million dollars is where we're at right now. The cash bond would be returned to the property owner in the rehab or demo is completed within the designated timeframe. If the property owner fails to, to start the repair or removal of the structure within the timeframe started, council could then require the structures to be demolished, the cash bond would be used for the city to complete the demolition. And then, city staff believes that the property at thirty-four oh five, East Fourth Avenue is beyond feasible repair, is in an unsafe condition, and poses a danger not only to those that work inside, but a danger to the surrounding neighborhood, and should be condemned as an unsafe and dangerous structure. Staff recommends that the property owner be allowed thirty days to repair or demolish and remove the condemned structure and all construction debris, and that on January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five be the next date that the city council review the progress of the rehabilitation or the demolition of this structure. Staff also recommends the requirement of the cash bond. You have any questions for Steph?
My first question is, we've talked a lot about the business owner and all the lack of communication you've had.
Yes.
But on the other hand, you were saying this is really just about the building.
Yes.
What communication have we had with the building owner, and where has he had in this process?
So we've had a lot of, with, with the communication with Mr. Razier, we've also had the communication with Mr. Devaney being the building owner. So there was, there was two parts to this. There's one, the lack of the certificate of occupants, occupancy to legally occupy the building as per building code. So we got that on one hand that is an issue with the building code. The other issue is the structure in of itself as an unsafe and dangerous structure. So you have to separate those two to send those notices out to Mr. Razier as a tenant who's illegally occupying this structure, and then we would separate that with Mr. Devaney because then we're dealing with the structure in of itself. So we would send those notices separate from, so Mr. Devaney has been notified of all these situations as well.
Since twenty-one?
There was some, there, there are some emails or comments in two thousand twenty-one, but yes, since two thousand twenty-one, Mr. Mr. Devaney has been involved.
John, I interrupted, I got some of my questions answered.
Yeah, I was just, back to the sixty-foot rule, if, if a partial demolition was done along the west side of the building to allow for sixty feet of space surrounding the building, and the way I understand it from Mike, sorry, I don't know if I'm supposed to say Mr. Fire Marshal or whatever, the, the actual existing fire system that is not functioning would have to be removed as well. If they were to put in a firewall, would it have to be removed if it's not used at all? And if, so if they were to demolition, the west portion of the building, because it looks like there's a different roof line, to allow for that sixty-foot space, that would, that exception would kick back in?
That would suffice. So if we-
As far as that part of the question.
That, that would, it would kick back in. So, so yes, if, if there is an existing system, it has to be maintained up, up to code. So there is no, if he doesn't want, if he doesn't want the system, doesn't want to maintain it anymore, it has to be taken out. There, there can be no, for my guys, for the public, for even his employees, there can be no expectation that when they walk in the building and they see sprinkler heads, that that building is, is sprinkled. So if he doesn't want to have that, if you can bring it down to where it needs to be, that's existing system would still have to be taken out.
If it's indeed found to be an F-two use?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, again, we're, we're back to, to that letter. We, we do, we have a difference of opinion, but I can go with the F-two. But again, that brings a whole bunch more stuff that-
I'm trying to grasp what kind of scale we'd be looking at to fall within the guidelines that are set forth in regards to what modifications and what would need to be done up today. And one step would be the fire suppression, which seems to be the biggest, one of the larger items.
But is it, all steps have to be met? Because you mentioned the firewall was an option, and then the sixty-foot rule, so is the KMS building not supposed to meet the same sixty-foot standard? Because they appear very, very close together.
They are very, very close together.
Okay, so-
So the KMS building, the KMS building is, is completely up to code.
Okay.
And so they are a sprink- they are a sprinkler building.
So it doesn't have to meet the sixty foot.
And, and as, as I know, their, their wall is a two-hour wall already. But then you go into, to the Fed and Happy building, and it's unsprinkled, so whether, whether there is a two-hour wall over here, this, this wall and that separation, it's still gonna have to be, unless we do some demo and, and they, they widen that gap.
So if they widen the gap, they don't have to build the firewall or do the sprinklers? Like what, what sets of-
It would not, the, the wider the gap, the less the firewall.
Okay.
So, so they, they take it down enough, and, and again, that would be something to sit down and go over, but there's, they're still gonna have to have a separation wall, which generally is gonna be a two-hour wall.
I think the answer to that, too, so if they had that sixty-foot of separation, then it could be considered an unlimited area building as landmark architects had suggested that it was currently.
We, we don't currently have water service to the building right now?
No, we do not.
But is the loop around the building charged?
No, it is not at this time.
And I believe, as we were looking at the, the loop itself, that the tap to our water land may have been improper as well. And Jason had a little bit more facts, but-
Yeah, doing a little bit of research on that, but we believe that the, the water tap for the water service to the building is tapped into the fire line as well, and that meter is a non-metered system, so if there is water going into the building, we wouldn't recognize that there's any consumption right now because it's an illegal tap.
Is there a chance that that was done decades ago?
There, there could be a chance that it was done decades, decades ago. We don't know when that was done.
I don't wanna point fingers or something.
I did talk to the water department the other day, and they said they've been denied access to the structure. I've asked them if they wanted to go out there with me, being said we have access to the structure. So if we need to go out there and take a look at it, we can to determine what the conditions
Okay, straighten me out here, please, 'cause KMS building and this worm farm are under the same roof that used to be the Cessna. Is that my, am I thinking right? So the KMS is under the same roof, but they're separate buildings and they're separate businesses inside of the old Cessna building?
Completely different buildings.
Is it?
Completely different properties.
Yep, completely different building, and there is a property line as well, so there is a, there is a designated property line between the two buildings.
I see. So they're completely, there's, there're no, the roofs are not attached together or not-
No, there is not.
Okay.
I believe they probably were at one point. I don't know the history of that, but, and I haven't looked back at all the photos of that, but my understanding is they were attached at one point, and that's been demoed since.
And as far as the fire sprinklers, you say, the reason it has to be took down, I'll get me straight on this, is the, you don't want people to walk in there and have a sense of security and saying, "Oh, there's sprinkler system here." That's why you want it took down completely, to show that there's no sprinkler system that's, that's right, am I wrong?
Yeah.
Basically, it's security, right?
And the code requires that any system that you have in the building, that it's maintained up to code. So if you have that system in the building, and it's not main- So, if you have that system in the building, and it's not maintained up to code, then it needs to be removed. So, there's, you don't have to maintain it one, and there's no assumption by anybody entering the building that they are protected by a fire suppression system. Also, yes.
Thank you. The storm happened, was it 23, May 24th, 23, is that correct?
I have May 21st.
So, so, did you ever get any reasoning why it was never repaired? You'd think, being a business owner, building owner, getting insurance, it would have been repaired. Have you ever got an answer why that wasn't?
I have not received an answer, so I think that'd be a question for the-
Are you certain that that's the collapse date?
June of 23?
Because the, so the May 20th, whatever, May-
May 23rd.
May 20, May 23rd, a storm. We received a FEMA declaration for that. So, in my communication with Mr. Rager, he says that that's not the date of the collapse, because I encouraged him to explore the FEMA funding that he would be eligible for if that were, but that declaration was only issued on August 20th. So, that, he says that that's not the collapse date. So, I think the collapse date was later, and it happened right before your inspection.
So, it didn't happen basically during the storm, half, half of the storm, then?
Right. In a different storm. It was a different storm that didn't meet the federal FEMA guidelines for damages.
So, you've heard from Dan and visited with him?
Yes.
I heard with him, I heard from him one time, asking for access to the building back in July, about the same time. I made the phone call to staff. He assured me he would have his product out of there by November 1st, and apparently, that was just a tactic to continue business as normal. So, I, I tell you, I've got a little bit of a chip on my shoulder, because it does seem like there's a lot of folks here missing in action until tonight. And now, I've got, I've got 20 different emails from people, all of a sudden, all in a, in a rush, and to have a plan and all of these things, when I don't know that there was any good faith. I, I need to hear from somebody telling me that I'm wrong.
But this is the hearing, when we're, this is when they're supposed to contact you. This is the literal hearing date that we set.
Okay, but they've ignored all of us about their future plans and, and the, the agreements that the fire department has made with them, that the city officials have made. It's just been, I, I feel like, for me, I'll just speak for me. I feel like we've been ghosted, and then we move forward, and then here we are.
Well, in the, in the process that we are following, there is no requirement for Dan or Pat or anybody involved to have communication with council or with staff in the meantime of when we set the hearing date, and today. Today's the hearing. Today's the day we ask people to show up and to test, to testify and to bring their case.
So, from now on, staff shouldn't do anything to try to get anybody to comply. We need to just have these hearings, because it doesn't seem to matter that we act in good faith to try to get something done.
No, I think the expectation would be that when, once we've set a hearing date, that you probably shouldn't expect robust communication from people in the middle of when the date was set and the actual date of the hearing, because the expectation is that you show up at the hearing and you, you give it your best shot there. That's my interpretation of the process that we're following.
Maybe I'm doing it wrong. I just feel like there's been-
We shouldn't have to have a hearing to get people to show up and get things done.
Well, that's my thought.
That's what I'm thinking, too.
Well, the, this is a state law that we are following. We are required to have a hearing.
No, no, I understand that. To tear the building down, we have to have a hearing. That's we, that's, we're at the end of the road.
Your frustration is that we've gotten to this point where it requires a hearing to discuss the matter of possibly tearing the building down.
Yes, and we've been talking about this since 2010, in some form or another. That's my frustration.
And if I could say something to that effect, Mr. Mayor. You know, you know, we've had the same type of communication with Mr. Rager, in and out, back and forth. This has been a process that's going on since 2010. And I just want to remind you all tonight, you know, we're not here to deem this as an unsafe and dangerous structure. According to the building code, that's my job as a building official, to deem it as an unsafe and dangerous structure, to go in, board the building up, and do what we need to do to protect people and keep our community safe. You know, what we're here for tonight is to, you as a council, to decide whether this is an unsafe and dangerous structure, and we need to condemn the building, or we need to order the repair of the building back to a natural state, a safe condition and a safe state.
All right, well, I appreciate that, and if there's no further questions, I would like to hear from the owner.
I have a question for Fire Marshal. Sir, you mentioned that a part of your anecdotal evidence of non-compliance was that Mr. Rager or the building owner have not contacted city staff to find out what the requirements of a certificate of occupancy are. Is that information not available on the city website or the state website, or the, through the Fire Marshal, or by any other means?
I believe, so that, that process is through the building department, and the same as, as any other permit process. It's my understanding, it's on the city website. The, but to answer your question, every time we have talked to Mr. Rager, and, and since, since the 10th of July, we've had multiple with his counsel that has been brought up. All they wanted to talk to me about was the Facebook post. So-
You mean they've brought up that they're unaware of the requirements of a certificate of occupancy?
Correct. And so, we, we brought up, you need to start here and go through this process, and then we will, I am more than happy to help anybody get through a process, and, and to do it as, as painlessly as, as possible, just because I get beat up so much. So, the, the more pain-free it is, the better. He has not taken advantage of that at all.
Okay, thank you. Jason, um-
Sorry.
Oh, did you have something to?
I was just going to say, from a building, you know, staff stance, we've had substantial communication. I mean, I've only been here since September, but we have documentation of substantial communication between Mr. Rager and the building staff requiring the certificate of occupancy on the building, and it's never been completed, and that's dating all the way back to 2021.
Do you think if we give them 30 days, we'll see anything happen?
Um, you know, I'm not opposed to the 30 days, just because, you know, I think at this point, you, you're not going to come up with an engineering plan overnight, you're not going to come up with the shoring plan overnight. You know, if they present a presentable plan, I'm not opposed to it. You know, a lot of the communication we've had in the last few months, even since we've talked to Mr. Rager's legal counsel, we're getting the same answers over and over, as the fact that, hey, the engineer's coming out, or the engineer has been out. We have this shoring plan. Well, we haven't seen the shoring plan, we haven't seen the engineering documents. Nothing's been presented to staff to show that they've made any consistent progress on the, on the structure itself, and the shoring up, the safety of the folks that he has working in there. You know, from my perspective, we've met the deadline of November 1st, we've met the deadline of December 1st, we're here tonight on December 17th, and we've allowed them to move things out of the building. They haven't continued to move things out to the building. From my perspective, looking in there, they've added things to the building. So, as an unsafe and dangerous structure, I mean, we go up and board up the building and, and shut down the business, because we can't have folks in there in an unsafe condition. So, I mean, that's our, that's our next step as a staff, is to look, contact our board-up crew and, and get out there and put it in a safe condition.
So, no one is supposed to be in, working in the building at this time?
Well, we've allowed them to continue to work in the building based on the fact that we were told that things would continue to progress out. We were asked for a, a date of 1 July of 2025, and that would have been based on the fact of the process that, and I'll let Mr. Rager talk to this, because I don't know the worm process, but based to the fact of the process that the worms take and, and whatever else goes on in that process. But we were asked for a date of 1 July 2025, but again, that's got to be based on good faith. I think we've given Mr. Rager good faith as a city, being said here this happened, you know, in May, as far as the structural collapse. We had the conversations in July, we gave a date of 1 November, and we've got more stuff added to the building now, along with the dirt that's along Airport Road, and nothing's changed. Business as usual, in, in my view and my perspective.
Is there any reason to believe that the dirt that is on, now on the outside, was some of the product or stuff that was on the inside?
No, I have reason to believe that it's not, there may be possibly some from the inside, but if there is, then some of that dirt's been cycled, and there's just as much or more on the inside than there was a month ago when I was out there.
What type of fire risk does the building have?
You know, it has a substantial risk, because if anything happens in that building, they have front-end loaders in there, they have Bobcats in there, they have, you know, their tractors and their equipment that they're hauling dirt around with. So, if there is a fire in that building, it has no protection. So, I would say there, there are also some, if we go back to-
So, in the east, in the picture of the east warehouse, it shows, it looks like the floor is dirt, possibly wooden trusses?
If we go back to, and I don't have the picture in here, so down the center line, I thought I added this picture, my apologies, but down the center line, there are a bunch of, here between the west side and the east side of the warehouse, there are a bunch of pallets and a bunch of bags. I don't know what's in those bags, whether it's something to feed the worms, or whether it's dirt in, in of itself. But there's a product in a bag that runs from south to north stacked up in pallets, so that presents a substantial risk as well.
Wooden pallets.
Yeah, wooden pallets and, and whatever product is on them in the bag.
I appreciate your question, Stacy, because it doesn't look to me like there's anything to burn.
Right, like it looks like dirt in a brick building with a dirt floor with metal trusses, maybe wood trusses.
Then there's also the potential of, you know, things that are going on in the building. I mean, obviously, the wiring and the electrical system is stripped out, but the building is required to have an electrical system. So, if you have an electrical system in there, if you have heating in there, ventilation, there's always a potential of a malfunction in any one of those systems, and presents a fire hazard as well.
Do you know when the power was shut off?
I do not.
I just wanted to add one thing real quick. It appears that there's not much combustible in there. But unprotected, without a sprinkler system, a vehicle that's in there or the pallets will reach a temperature well in excess of 800 degrees, which still, the steel truss expand and lose 60% of their strength between 800 and 1,200 degrees. So, just the fact that the biggles in there that can burn, get enough of a temperature increase to weaken those structures, that add along construction collapse of a portion of the building could include multiple trusses in our larger collapse.
Thank you.
Well, any other questions, or shall we hear from the owner?
Mr. Mayor, if it'd be all right, I would, I would like to have the opportunity to hear from the owner of the property and, and Mr. Rager, but also reserve the right to go back and forth if it raises more questions for staff.
Yeah, I think, I think that's what we're here for, is, I mean, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Could I, the owner come to the, the microphone and talk about his building?
My name is Pat Devaney. I'm the owner of the entity that owns the building.
Okay.
There are so many things that I've heard for the first time tonight, and a lot of things are wrong, as far as I'm concerned. I sent, you're Mary, aren't you?
Yes.
Last week, I sent you some stuff that you sent to all these people. And what I sent were the communications that we were having with Mr. Lady about how you start to rehab the building. The first thing you have to do is get rid of that collapsed portion of the building. And the, I sent seven different emails, and I, some of the stuff is overlapping, but the first one was, there was an October 23rd meeting with several of the people here, Dan, his attorney, and I was present. The gist of that was, Dan's supposed to request additional time and send a letter by the 24th. So, the first email that was sent was the letter that his attorney sent, and then there's the email correspondence that he sent with it. Mr. Lady said he would respond for the request for more time the next day. The second email I sent was the October 25th letter that Mr. Lady sent back. In that, he had various things, and he wanted updates. So, the third email that I sent, and I'm getting all these emails, I'm not writing them, I'm just getting them, and, and so, you'll see an email chain, and I didn't know how to separate it out, so I had to send it-
That's okay, I'm right there with you. And I read that, I'm like, oh, I've already read this, so I get it, I understand.
And so, the first one was sent on, I think, November 8th, and it was sent by Tyler Heffern, I think is the attorney's name for Mr. Rager. And it, it responded to each of the things, this is what has been done since the meeting, and we'll keep, each week, we'll let you know what goes on. The fourth one I sent, I think, was the October, or November 16th or 17th or 18th email, the second one stating what's been done. What's the fifth one there? That was the sixth one. Yeah, the sixth one. Catherine sent an updated estimate, or an updated proposal from the shoring company. And on the next day, she sent another email with an update on the different things. Now, the reason, I want to get back to all this, we've been trying to get it, they talked about never receiving a proposal from the shoring company. That was sent, and it's part of the documents that you were sent, because it was one of the emails. The shoring company had to have this. And so, as you go through it, you wind up with the shoring company doing it, then the city wants engineers to say, all right, this is a proper shoring arrangement, and it can be done. And so, then the engineers have to review what the shoring company did, and then prevent it, present it to the city. So, then, we, at that point, assuming it's agreeable to the city, then American Wrecking can come in and take out the, well, the shoring company will do their work, American Wrecking will come in and eliminate the part that's fallen down. And I want to emphasize something to you, this is a 300 and some thousand foot square building. This collapse was at the southern end, and it covers 6,000 to 8,000 feet, less than 2% of the building, maybe 3%. And it was on a portion of the building that was added who knows when, but, I mean, decades ago. And that's right where it collapsed. If you see the pictures from the roof, you'll see just where it went. And probably the biggest reason for that was that whoever had the building before, they- they put in these heavy cranes and then with the wind or whatever happened, and it wasn't in May, it was June nineteenth that this happened, two thousand twenty-four. Because I, I got a call that morning, I came down here on the twenty-second of June, we talked about. Then, so you've got all the things that it broke there because of the extra heavy load at that point in time. So you have to get the people in there to take it out. You have to have the shoring so that you don't damage something else. Then as you go through that, you see that it's just, once they take it, they remove the collapsed area, then you can have an engineer come in and say, all right, what else needs to be done? If a whole bunch needs to be done, maybe you get rid of the building. But if you just have to put in some repairs that are reasonable in cost, you can do that. That's what all these documents have been for and that's what we've been talking to Mr. Lady about. And that's what all these things say, that's what we're trying to do. So it's not like we're not, we're sitting here not doing anything. But I mean, you need to know what it's going to cost.
Yeah, I understand.
It's a single per-
Yeah, I, I agree. And I've seen all those emails and they're very, it looks like nothing's been done since June nineteenth. It looks like this all started just a few weeks ago with repairing the building. Is that not the case?
No, not at all. I came down here June twenty-second. Shortly thereafter, I contacted somebody about getting rid of the collapsed part, demolition, a man from Salina named Pete Bohm, B.O.H.M. I don't, maybe some of you people know him. And I talked to him about what would need to be done. So he came down and looked at, he called the city and talked about getting a permit and stuff. Then I talked to Dan and he wanted to try to save more of it than I was going to take out. And so then we started talking to American Wrecking. And, you know, he said, all right, we can do this and we can do that. So we got started, but if you'll look, he said, nothing happened from, all through July and August, we were talking back and forth with the various people. There'll probably be a city record that shows when American Wrecking filed an application for demolition permit.
September twenty-sixth.
Didn't they file before that?
According to your letter from Mr. Heffron, Heffron from Triplett Wolf Garrettson, he says that American Wrecking applied for a demolition permit on September twenty-sixth for parts of, for that part of the building.
Okay. My recollection is they initially did it much earlier than that, but maybe they did something additional at that point in time because they had to get their insurance and some different things in. As, then, as we started to look at the various things as far as what needs to be done, you can't, like I think in Dan's letter, he talks about, you have to look backwards because you have to get rid of that first and to get that, you have to keep going back to, how do you get the permit to get rid of this stuff? And so that's one of the things that we're dealing with. But as far as the various items, we've been working on it, constant communication with people saying, all right, what do we have to do? What do we have to do? How do you get the professionals to come out when they want? But you said like on October second, about the same time you started, Earl's Engineering came down and that was the first thing that I had there. And he talked about his October second evaluation of what needed to be done. And so it hasn't been like, we're not trying to get things done, but we're trying to find out what the real facts are going to be, what it's going to cost to do the things. Now, the building, it's never going to be a manufacturing plant. Basically, it's an indoor farm and it's a farm because it provides some degree of protection from the outside elements and you can't, it helps to raise those worms. I mean, all they're doing, you put in some stuff, you put the worms in there and they start to do what they do. They eat the stuff and as their excrement comes out, it's good for the product that people want and it helps the soil. So, I mean, the only thing I would say is, what I'd just like to get some time to find out what it's really going to cost to get first, get rid of the collapsed portion. All right, then they can come in and I think Dan set out some timeframes in there. And once he's done that, they can come in, they can do it and you can get a real idea of what should happen here. They talk about, I was told, or I heard somebody say something about me receiving emails in two thousand twenty-one. To the best of my knowledge, I've never received an email from anybody in the fire department or anybody in the building thing before I started getting them from Mr. Lady, I think in October. I had a couple of letters that I got about the building being locked up on July eleventh because I called after I got that and we set a meeting on the seventeenth that I came down for. And that's when we went through everything and talked about it. One thing, Mr. Lady said that it's just completely wrong. He showed the pictures of the dirt piles, what has happened? Because I went today when I got in town and I asked Merle Miller, I said, this looks like you've got more dirt over here. So yeah, we moved it from the other side to get it closer so we can get it out quicker. And so that, there's no new dirt coming in there. That is dirt that was moved from the other side. And if you look there and I mean, you've seen enough of that, you saw how full it was back there, it's all empty now. It's because they moved it to the center line or to the west side. And that's what's happened. There's been, new product has not been brought in. You know, maybe they put a supplement on something, but they're not bringing truckloads of stuff in. And every bit of that stuff outside, Dan told me earlier, is stuff that came out of the warehouse because they're trying to get it out. They've probably gotten about thirty percent of it out. And I, I asked that specific question to Merle earlier today and he said, he said, I can't tell you exactly, but it's less than fifty, probably between thirty and forty percent of all the material is out. And so, you know, I'd like to find out first, what's it going to cost to try to rehab the building? Who knows what that building is worth? If it's worth anything, it's only worth something to somebody who can use it. Now, but if you were trying to build that building, three hundred thousand square feet, what would it cost you? Well, I don't know what it would cost you, but let's just say, what would the roof cost you for three hundred thousand feet of roof? Well, I'm just redoing a roof on a property I own. Eight thousand feet and it costs us a hundred thousand dollars, twelve bucks a foot. So you figure, if you can get, let's say you get it for half that, five bucks a foot times three hundred thousand, that's just with the roof, doesn't have any to do with the structural steel and stuff like that. You know, and they talk about, it's easy to tear something down. But now, maybe they don't think it's feasible to do it, but if he has a good business and I know that their product is recognized as among the best in the country, he could grow that business, he could afford to spend that money to make the property compliant. But I don't have any interest in the business. I just think it's something that can help agriculture. You know, it's just one of those things, give us a chance to see what the cost is. And we've been trying to do that and that's what the documents I sent to you are for.
And Pat, I appreciate that and I'm not trying to be hurtful or upset. I just feel like so many times we have people acting maybe not in good faith. It sounds like maybe there is a plan in place and we, you know, when will we know how much it's going to cost and if you're willing to do that?
Well, he set out the times, I don't have my glasses on. He can go through it, but I mean, I think it set out exactly when it would be. But if I'm not mistaken, they can do the shoring by the seventeenth.
The shoring proposal's already been prepared. It would have been executed a significant period of time ago if we, if this hearing had not been set. But once this hearing got set, everything stopped on that. But if we get time, it will be executed in the morning. They assure me that it can be installed prior to, they actually said prior to Christmas. I don't actually think that's possible. American Wrecking believes that they only need two to three days. In the proposal, I've given both of them more time, so believing that the building would be, the collapsed area would be shored up and demoed by, by January seventeen.
And Dan, do we have engineered, or maybe I should ask Jason, do we have engineered prints that satisfy what the city needs?
So that proposal is, it's prepared by them, but they don't give that to us until we've fully executed the agreement to go ahead and go over the shoring.
Oh, I see, gotcha.
So I mean, it's ready to go and they've been bugging me to go and told them that they will find out. But it was one of those things that, once this hearing got set and our proposal that we gave to the building inspectors, sorry, dates are, but-
October twenty-first.
October, once that was done. And then we still continue to proceed and continue to spend money on the building. But the shoring and the actual demo, that kind of got brought to a halt until this hearing was going to happen. So, and I can go in or-
Why don't you do it?
So, my first part, I'm gonna, I wasn't really prepared to talk about two thousand ten, so some of this is going to be jumped up, jumped around a little bit, or two thousand and seven or two thousand and ten, and then I'll get started. So on two thousand, in two thousand and ten, the city staff was onsite almost daily. Building permit was obtained, I think it was around five hundred dollars. But the inspections happened regularly. I mean, the fire department was there multiple times a day, all the way up to the chief, all the way up to the city manager, John Deardoff. And I've talked to him in the last two months. I mean, he remembers this very well, including that he continues to play golf with Todd Harmon and they talk about the project. So I mean, the fact that city wasn't involved or it wasn't approved, I mean, it went all the way up to the city council, the fire detection system was approved, how we did the fire sprinkler and putting in new valves, the loop, all that went through city, fire department, building inspection. And while I believe that that project was much less significant than what we're talking about today, because this project is going to be much more than just demoing a very small part of the building by the time we're done. But that project still took nearly a year of plan and execution. So expecting that we're going to have full engineered prints on the entire building within, in some cases, a week, two weeks, thirty days, that's not really reasonable. And that's why that proposal asking till July with some other dates in there, and that has been updated with, with a letter as well from PEC out of Wichita, as well as Landmark Association, or Landmark Architects on their timing too. So, and then on the building, the building was designed with joint easement. So even though there is a property line, it is designed with joint easement on both sides from a fire perspective. And even though at the time this was not part of the city, everything was jointly approved by city, county, and it was led by the Chamber of Commerce through, I believe it was Go Investments or Growth Investments at that time in two thousand and seven. The reason why the city was involved in two thousand and seven, even though it was not part of the city, I believe the city contributed five hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Eaton to stay at that point. And that's when the sixty-foot easement, or sixty-foot spacing in between the two buildings, because originally that building was a giant horseshoe. So the lane that you see on the aerials, there was a sixty-foot truss in there that was removed. There is a small original office entry from Eaton, or sorry, from Cessna that was there. After meeting with everybody, it was agreed that that would stay. The fire chief at the time said, well, our opening is still, still bigger than the gate. It's a very small outcropping and that was allowed to stay. If at this point it's required that that outcropping has to go, Landmark has already did that engineering. Landmark and PEC already did that engineering almost seventeen years ago now. That unhappy has not been operated as normal. All of our screening equipment was moved outside. Retail operations have never happened in the building. We're not a retail business as going to, some of our letters that I believe came in, now, we almost exclusively sell wholesale. We're not, we're built for producing high-quality products, both on our worms and our castings and our liquids, and we're just not set up for handling Suzie or Joe at one pound or five hundred worms at a time. It's on our website in case we ever chose to do that. We get an order every so often, but the bulk of our business is all about the wholesale side. And frankly, we sell more at wholesale than what we do at that one pound anyways. So the soil from the east side that you now see was removed from the building. It has been insulated some with manure, trying to preserve that. By moving it outside, we are highly risking destroying all the value of that product and making it unsellable. And the material on the west side did come from the east side and sitting there and staging. We are limited, even though we have a very large loader there, we can't actually get that loader in the building. So another aspect of getting the demo area gone is that we gain more access to the building again. So work on our list, both Firetronics, who maintains the fire monitoring system, which has never been discontinued. The last payment for that system was December one. It has never gone out of operation. When the collapse happened, the reason why the fire department came out is because that system tripped when there was a collapse and that's why they came out. We had somebody there as well on the north side working on liquids. But that system was, was terminated, but the rest of the system remained intact including to this day. Gibby's Plumbing, they've been working on the loop. It has taken them longer than what they wanted. They've got one spot where originally the police department ran over a fire hydrant. We've been replacing that, but it was put in a long time ago and it took them a lot more to dig it out than they expected. And when they did so, they also cracked some pipes. And so they're waiting on some new pipes to come in to finish that up. And it should be done here within a week. Prior to them starting that, they contacted the fire marshal, making sure that he was okay with what they were going to be doing.
Gibby's did?
That's what they told me. And I asked them late last week if they had talked to the fire marshal since and they had said, they said no at that point. And yes, so a meeting date was set for parties by the chamber. I don't have the date in front of me, but the only people who attended, where's my, the chamber, Mayor Fast and myself, and a follow-up meeting did not, did not happen. I do recognize the, my own, I don't want to say absence because I'm very involved in this business. It has required a significant amount of travel. We maintain worm farms both throughout the U.S. and we have one that we maintained in Canada as well. And so this business literally was started from scratch. And so it, there was hundreds of thousands of miles that were traveled every, every year until sometime this last year where a lot of that slowed down on my own travel aspects. Also, all the products in the building was subject to a third-party litigation this entire period, including after the collapse. And so third-party notifications had to happen and through the court and through the third party. On the, we did have an employee who on Hutch Life page made a post about, we make a worm casting soaper, we have it made for us. And it eliminates acne, cleans up skin, et cetera. And they wondered why we don't sell any product to, to local Hudson individuals, that everything goes out in trucks or farmers come and they thought that was a shame. It wasn't an authorized post. They were just trying to do what they thought was right. And even at that point, people were not coming to the building. It hasn't, didn't sell anything, but it definitely was not authorized. And, and even at that point, people were not coming to the building, it hasn't, didn't sell anything, um, but it definitely was not authorized. This business has grown from word of mouth, and we have always been very quiet, um, almost, um, no advertising. We do get talked about at conferences by our users, um, last week alone at various ad conferences, we were talked about by three different, by three different speakers, or three different conferences, um, but as a whole, this whole business has grown off of word of mouth. And it's, it's why, why we sell worms wholesale is because it literally, we haven't had to market it. Um, our husband jury is incredibly superior, um, a lot of it is attributed to the building, but that very natural process and that our process within the building is designed to be, to be more stable. Um, it limits how much we, we take in, we take out, um, a normal composting system is built off of rows. Ours is built off of larger blocks, and so when they harvest, um, they take the entire row. So, cutting off that arm, our system is more like a gash, and then we backfeed, and so what that does is that keeps that whole system stable. Um, it also allows our biology to be more diverse and also very consistent. We have, um, superior scale compared to our competitors, and we deliver a very, very consistent product from, um, bag to batch, uh, bag to bag, year to year. So, um, so, I'm at the end of my notes from kinda cleaning up a little bit, so I'm gonna start in, so I apologize for that. So, Fed and Happy produces a high-quality granular and liquid products from worm castings and worms. Our customers are farmers, golf courses, landscapers, worm farms, mushroom growers and gardeners. Our products are almost exclusively sold on a wholesale basis. Um, products have been purchased for over a million acres each of the last two years across the U S. The east coast and the western states are our largest, um, growth areas currently for granular products. Our liquid products primarily stay within a twelve-hour drive, um, worms are shipped all over the U S and two points in Canada. While we continue to see competitors come and go, including competitors that have, um, wanted to copy our process, but our process requires patience, um, and each time we try to set up an area, it takes over two years to get it, um, in a stable form. And during that time, it has almost, besides watering and some feeding, it has almost no human interaction. Our system's known for biological diversity, produces more stored value, um, higher water retention, greater nutrient utilization and more carbon sequestration. Um, we have both biology that sequesters both carbon dioxide out of the air and then brings that into the ground, um, both via plants and via the biology, and also nitrogen from the air into the plant as well. Within that, we use a process called cover cropping within the building, started as an accident from something from cotton seeds. And it was built on something that we were doing at another farm too, and that allows us to grow a specific fungi within that system, which is very unique to, to our product. We're poised for significant growth for twenty twenty-five and twenty-six. In Hutchinson, um, by June of twenty twenty-six, the goal would be thirty-five employees plus logistics needs. Um, that would be for our primary operations with the potential for signal for more indirect and indirect supporting roles, depending on final site design and implementation. We're ready to execute the shoring agreement, um, with demolition of the portion, of the damaged portion to start after the shoring completion and city approval. The short area is approximately eighty feet by a hundred and twenty feet area. This would have, could have already been done and would have been done had this hearing not been scheduled. And fully recognize the herky-jerky-ness, um, we've had not only this hearing, a change in building, um, building inspectors, also, um, the litigation and also negotiating on the purchase of the building, but as far as, um, work started on this within hours of the collapse happening, we had a contractor and engineer out there to look at what needed to be done. Our success is based on superior quality, and we need to be able to keep product inside the building, um, that's why it's in the staging rows. If we absolutely have to remove it, um, we will lose almost all that value. Right now, there's about ten million dollars worth of value plus our value in the worms, um, in that product. We've removed product, anything close to the collapsed area, um, we've had both engineers, architects out there, um, looking at the risk. And as the city has stated, they have allowed us to continue to be in the areas not, that don't appear to be damaged. If the plan is approved, um, most of, our screening, it's not very feasible to be screening, with our screening operation in the middle of winter, um, we've been doing it, um, but my plan would be to move, move that staff mostly to general cleanup and working towards long-term needs of the building. But we also need to have a, we need to get to a workable solution soon for proper plan. In the past several months, months of triage have caused significant setbacks, but our strong customer base continues to propel us forward. We have moved some operations to two other facilities as well, um, but some of that isn't in our best interest. Um, it's moving it out of the community, um, but also recognizing that we need to support our customers. On that, we need to make decisions based on our operations, bagging, um, the plan on this year was to add, um, a bagging operation within, within Hutchinson, um, some additional research and development, um, and then large jumps in our liquid capabilities for farmers. And in the last several months, we've already moved one of our new machines, um, to another operation, even though it's been, it's what we've had to do right now, but it's a dumb logistical and operational decision to move it outside of where our primary work is. We do need more time to move material. If it's moved in its current state, we will damage it and absolutely lose our worms as well. We've talked about the stage on the east side, the west side, the worms do have to remove, be removed from the beds. It's not, not something that we can just take them out even mechanically, and screening worm castings is very hard. The fact that you're screening to a very fine, and it's also wetter material than almost anything else that's screened. So, that staging process is important, um, to make it feasible. Our reach is far greater outside of Hutchinson than is locally, uh, we will continue to grow that, but the same opportunities exist within the, the city and the county, and we'd prefer to make Hutchinson a permanent home with significant renovation to the current facility, far more than just talking about removing the collapsed area, um, scanning that, um, but also windows and, um, other cosmetic improvements too, um, along with the life safety measures that would be agreed to. So, with that, I wanna jump to the plan just a tiny bit. So, we have asked for access through July one, um, but with significant points between now and then. On, on addressing the, um, recognizing that with, with demolition and other aspects, and also just completely avoiding any potential, um, entrance to the building, um, the installation by February one, installation of a temporary building for truck drivers, customer pickup, contractor check-in at the south end of the property. Some of that time is on there, just making sure that, um, just like moving material out of the building and putting it outside and already complain of that, that doesn't comply, not wanting to get a temporary building that, again, doesn't comply with what we're supposed to be doing. May also ask for two additional temporary to permanent buildings that could accommodate material screening and processing, um, somewhere on the property. But fully intending that that would meet, um, meet any regulations that would need to be met. Execute the shoring plan, um, tomorrow, um, within that, they would finalize their, their engineering drawings and approve, or submit those to the city. And, and on that shoring plan, they primarily use, um, existing pre-approved, pre-stamped scaffolding columns. And so submitting that is not, um, while they do have an engineer on staff, it's not a full workup going down to things that haven't already been done. They expect the installation to happen before the end of the year, um, but lauding through January eighth on that. American Wrecking is proceeds, is ready to proceed with the demo of the damaged portion after they receive their final approvals from the city staff and weather dependent, um, with a lot of through January seventeenth on that. And I'd love to say that they would be done before the end of the year, but there's been enough delays on this, and I know Murphy's Law will have a big snowstorm right after this is approved. American Wrecking would coordinate with Fire Tronics to ensure the fire detection remains functional during and after the demolition period. The prints, uh, Fire Tronics has already looked, looked at this, um, there is, depending on how the demo goes, there is a break, um, which would require a new wire, um, to fully keep that south end fully on the detection system, but still a relatively minor, um, clamping on the wire basically into that system, and it's on one zone. Then, an engineering analysis will be completed after the demolition of the damaged portion to assess any additional damage and prepare engineering for repairing the space. P E C expects to visit post demolition within three weeks of demolition, uh, with expectation that the demolition is completed by January seventeenth. Uh, once engineering is complete, the new required metalwork would be completed, and the exterior of the facility would be re-skinned to enclose a portion of the facility exposed by the demolition. To the extent that the re-skinning requires permitting and licensure, that would be done by the contractor. Working with Landmark, um, we've identified several areas within the building on potential differences in occupancy code, whether that be in office or not, um, and at the end of the day, we still may go for abandoning office space, um, and going for a general occupancy code, but asking till February seventeenth, um, to submit that, um, but also fully expecting that there's gonna be a lot of discussion on each of those code spaces, um, prior to the seventeenth, when we actually submit that formal request, and, and all reality, if we can get to a point before the seventeenth, that's better for everyone anyways. Within that occupancy, all the egress and lighting plans would also be submitted at the same time. One issue that's been brought up repeatedly by the city staff is, um, is the lighting. Worms require, worms can't have lighting like this, it paralyzes them and then kills them. So, um, Landmark has been looking at options, what we can do on that lighting. Um, the code that they, they suggested would not require anything special, but also knowing that on egress, we need to look at that. Red lights are acceptable, um, for the worms, still waiting on if that's acceptable from an egress perspective. Um, the fire extinguishers would be installed per the egress plan, um, and then Landmark would prepare a site rendings no later than May one. And a timeline for proposed work and phases for site improvements. Anticipating, this is an opportunity to do more than just, um, just this. There may be an opportunity within the education side, um, looking at where that occupancy code is, we do wanna be careful in that we don't do any, going through this process, we don't wanna do all this and then get ourselves right back into this problem of, saying that staff or a public is walking in, so creating clean spaces, and most likely that's gonna happen in a separate building, or at very least, very clean, clean lines with that. The fire loop at the exterior of the building, um, is progressing, um, it is metered by the city, it was installed per the city specs, and it has a, a city meter on it. So, I'm, but I do fully agree, it is on the fire, the city fire loop and not the main, um, and that's why it had that city or the separate city meter, meter on it. And then, um, we're also continuing to work with the state of Kansas and agencies, both on different incentives, um, and also classification codes, both on our staff, um, also training programs. And then, uh, within this process between now and May one, uh, setting up meetings between, um, between us and community stakeholders. We do recognize that it is a gateway, um, the city owns this, owns the property across the street. If we move forward with a full renovation, it makes sense to, to also, um, add in, add in our test plots that we do in other places. And so we've also been in contact with, um, H I I about leasing their frontage, um, along with potential water as well. So, I think that's it right now.
What's your first name?
Dan.
Excuse me?
Dan.
Tim?
Dan.
Dan. Last name?
Razor.
Razor, of course, we've been talking about Razor all day. Okay. You know, what options do we have? We have one option here, give him a thirty-day to do something to fi- to fix the building, am I right or am I wrong? That's the only option we have, or? We can do anything we wanna do.
Correct.
There are a lot of ways to, different ways to move forward, as Fire Marshal mentioned, um, and has been mentioned by others. Like, we can change the code, we can change the zoning, we can craft different kind of carve-outs for this property. That's one way to move forward. I think the other option is you can give him time, give them time to, uh, make the repairs and make good on the plans that, that he's, um, proposed here tonight. Or we can move forward with this, or we can amend this.
Yeah, the biggest, Mr. Razor, the biggest thing that comes to my head all the time, you have to keep an operation to make money to, um, get these repair done. So, say we grant you some time or whatever, you gonna, how many employees do you have working in this? In here right now?
So, we have five total, and they spend almost all their time outside, um, underneath an awning screening today. So, that product is leaving, um, in trucks, um, but it has to be screened before it can leave for the bulk of it. Now, we do have some of it leaving bulk to another, another operation, but that's, um, only been around
Right.
Tenish, or no, um, around fifteen semi-loads on that.
Well, the reason I ask that, say we do give you permission to keep going, if something does happen, if something, uh, God forbid, it does fall, you know, we have a certain obligation that something happens to an employee, and they'll come back and say, well, you guys okayed that? You understand what I'm saying, where I'm coming from on that?
I do understand that, um, also, you know, we have had engineers out there looking, um, and so this building is designed as a column, they haven't determined that there's, um, a domino risk to that. The other side too is that if, if the shoring, I mean, if, if we're given time, the shoring plan starts tomorrow-ish, um, and so then our access from a loader perspective becomes probably nil, um, while that demo process is going on. So, I wouldn't fully expect that a lot is gonna, now, we may get approval or propose removing a different way. But the people that are gonna be in that area that is affected would be shoring staff and the contractor related to that.
So, you would start the shoring right away, am I right?
That is what we're proposing and have wanted to do, yes.
Mr. Inspector, if they shored it right away, that, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a construction person, I mean, would that help make it safer? I'm sure it will, right?
Make that portion of the, make that portion of the building, um, safer. But there's still other hazards that are present in the building besides just the shoring of that south end of the structure. You know, to, to Mr. Razor's comments, I, you know, we've had some communication back and forth, and, um, we've had some very good conversations. But I, I don't understand tonight, um, what this hearing had to do with the holding up of the shoring. Um, we've had this shoring plan for some time, uh, we've talked through this, some of this shoring plan, and I'll give you a chance to make comment too. So, we've had this shoring plan for some time, we have not received any engineer drawings regarding this shoring plan. And I think we could've got this, we've, I mean, this has been since June. And I think we could have got this, we've, I mean, this has been since June, obviously, that this collapse happened. It's been July since staff's been out there. It's been just consistently over and over that we haven't got any progress with this, with this building.
I, I've got some questions for Mr. Razor, but I'm going to ask you one thing real quick.
Sure.
So the, the permit for the shoring was applied for in late September.
Yes.
Was that, was that approved or is it, we need to see more?
We need to see more, so.
So no permits been issued to do any of the shoring because you're waiting on more information?
We're waiting on more information, yes. So I started with the city on the 23rd of September. American Wrecking did come in on the 26th of September, applied for the permit. They do still owe us a couple of things to actually get their contractor license because they're not a licensed contractor to do the shoring yet. And then we asked for the engineer plans and American Wrecking is aware that we've asked for the engineer plans from them prior to starting the shoring and those plans have to be approved. So it would take some time to start that shoring. Now, this is an emergency situation in, in my consideration, so we would be able to review those plans fairly quickly. And, and it is a shoring plan and if it's a, you know, stamped engineer based on the fact and the documents they've already provided for the shoring that they intend on putting in the structure, we'd probably grant that permit pretty quickly along with the plans and the fact that the contractor gets licensed.
Okay, and I apologize, my computer's shut down, so I can't review. Is, is American Wrecking providing their own engineering or is that a separate third party that you're, you're coordinating with for the shoring?
So part of the, originally, they were providing that engineering. They probably weren't as quick as I would have liked either. I mean, I got the call that, oh, we're good to go, we're moving in equipment next 48 hours. Obviously, that didn't happen. And we did work with their engineer for a period of time and then found out that they didn't have, they're great at bridges. And I assume that they do do a lot of engineering for this particular demo contractor, but it's less on the shoring side and more of, we're stamping it because you're just knocking the whole thing down. And so their risk profile is a whole lot different. And so at that point, switched to Brian Safeway and they are a shoring contractor. And so they have their own engineer. And, and again, it is scaffolding and columns and so it's not like building a brand new building with fabricated stuff. It's stuff off the shelf.
And so you have a different shoring contractor lined out, has their own engineer now?
Right, but they've already, they have been in conjunction with Carl as well. And so, I mean, they're ready to go and yes, they do need to submit the paperwork to, to the city, but, and so that would be signed as soon as we had that time. And going back to why wouldn't it go, that when this was presented for a hearing, well, I don't think anybody wants to just go and write a check and then know that, well, that could have just been a big sunk cost that, for not real, no real gain there. But yes, it would have been, I would have much rather been, had a meeting with the council and the portion had already been gone.
I, I've got a series of questions, just for, some of these are clarifications, some of them I'm going to look like a jerk, so you ready?
Sure.
All right. So do you have power to the building now?
We do and we always have had power, but we've never needed, so in 2010, when at that point, there was probably 12,000 to 16,000 amps at 480 in that building. All of that was removed and what was replaced was a new transformer on the east side of the building. That has always remained on. It powers the, the fire system, but there is not, there's not power to the south end of the building, so it's a very limited spot within the building.
And, well, I mean, if you have fire detection, I was assuming you had some kind of power out there. And are you, do you currently have water out there? Do you have to truck water in?
So we don't actually, the only water that we use is, is rainwater. So we either collect it from a livestock purpose or it's trucked in. And even if we had city water turned on, we couldn't use, the city water would kill all the biology. So it's not usable anyways.
So is, part of your game plan is to remove enough structure along the west side to allow for that 60-foot access easement?
I've had a few conversations with Sarah. The easement was approved by the city two different times, including when the city allowed the fire system to be, not eliminated, but to be taken offline. And so.
That was under a different occupancy as far as I know.
What's that?
That was under a different use for the facility as far as I know.
A far higher fire risk. I mean, it was grain. So it was a higher fire risk, but those discussions have started, but looking at all of our options on that too.
And then I guess here comes where the pointed questions come in. So you've been operating a business illegally with no certificate of occupancy for a while.
We have.
Why not try to chase that or at least show progress on that, not necessarily since the building collapsed, but before that happened?
I don't have a good answer on that.
Has, has there any, has there been anything done in regards to repairing some of the doors, exit lights, emergency lights? Not counting, I mean, we've been talking about the structure collapsing, but just the, just normal egress aspects that are, I mean, the doors should be somewhat of a low cost.
So most of our doors were accessible. We have more that are blocked now because the city blocked them up. But, so once they got blocked up, no, we didn't keep, we haven't made any progress on that. But if given time, we would. We do have the power along that east wall, so getting the power to those doors for a light is something that can be, can be done in a reasonable amount of time.
And what I'm trying to get at is, is showing a pattern of some type of progression, even if, if it's not meeting the deadlines as set, but showing some steps forward. Helps us out a lot in our decisions. When, when things aren't being done until it gets to the last few months, it's really difficult to.
And that process.
Good business or not, I mean, you protect your business by making sure it's in a facility that works properly.
Those discussions absolutely started and that planning was in process in August. And I mean, things came to a real hard halt in September. I mean, I really thought that we were, demo was happening and we would start making progress on knocking things out, so.
I'm done being a jerk for the moment.
Jason, I have a question for you. In one of your letters, you mentioned that, and I have like 20 tabs open, so I don't know which document it was, sorry. You mentioned that heat needs to be restored to the building. Is heat something that's required for the certificate of occupancy?
That condition building would be.
Okay.
I'm not necessarily.
So it has to be.
It has to be at a certain temperature.
Okay, that was my next question.
The code does require, but it's pretty minimal.
To keep the pipes from freezing in the sprinkler system.
Keep sprinkler system from freezing and just keep conditioned air within the structure, yes.
Okay, and Dan, is heat something that is, like, does that work for your product?
We don't need to keep it fully heated. I mean, our system, we want to keep it, it keeps itself right around that 60 to 80 degrees in the winter and we time things to maintain that heat. But, I mean, I do expect that with the plan and also depending on how we segment things out, that I think we can come to some workable solutions. I think it'll be, my gut says it's going to be some sort of radiant and, and I believe, I mean, even before this, we were looking at a video IR system to monitor both our humidity, or not humidity, but our, our moisture and our, our temperatures everywhere. And so there's some options. How they comply or do not comply on the ULR code aspects would require a little bit more depth, but there are definitely some options and that can be presented as well.
I have a question about, Pat mentioned that, you know, going down this path, that you don't want to spend millions of dollars on a building. You know, at what point are you going to find out that it's too expensive to do what you want to do? Is that in July of 25 or when, when are you going to know?
I fully believe that we're going to know that before March 1. I mean, I think between February 1 and March 1, that that dates, that's fully going to be there. But from a business perspective, the last six months, and we had a truck accident right before, or about 30 days before this, so the last seven months, it's been pretty tough from an operational aspect along with, and a very hard ad year and we still grew significantly. We have a tremendous amount going for us. We compete with billion dollar backed VC companies on a daily basis and win. And so I fully believe that we're going to get to a point that meets the city, city's needs and our needs.
None of us are up here to put anybody out of business. That's not our goal. It's to make our structures safe and to have a plan in place and to have some good faith that those things are going to happen.
And I did, I mean, when we met a year ago, I, I really thought that the sale of the building was going to happen late last fall. And one of the first things that I wanted to happen from an aesthetic standpoint was getting all of our windows replaced. That, I know it's easy to say that replacing the windows isn't going to matter much, but when it's a 900 foot wall of five foot windows that are blue and even if they've been replaced with plexiglass, they still look like it's broken out. I think that right there is going to significantly move things in the right direction. Also does some positive things for us too inside the building.
I think it's really hard to try to separate the certificate of occupancy and the business operations because Mr. Devaney has no motivation, besides intrinsic motivation to make the repairs on the building if, if you aren't in the building. And repairing the, the wall, really, it's not necessarily the first step to getting your certificate of occupancy, but it's built in there. They're all built in together and if we do demo this, it is going to shut him down. So we're at a point where we have, we have conflicting priorities and, you know, on one side, it's, we're going to be seen as being too lenient. And then on the other side is we look like we're not business friendly. Technically, it's been 181 days since the wall collapsed. It's been 120 some business days. And we're asking for probably a million dollars worth of work when it's all said and done. I don't know anybody who would be able to jump on that as a small business owner, who's also trying to stay afloat and maintain operations. I mean, he's a, he's a victim of an act of God. That's what the storm was that caused the collapse. And this just feels like a really harsh outcome. So I think allowing more time to see how this shakes out. He's presented plans. We've been, we've received, I've never received so many letters of support and I think you guys are all CC'd on the emails as well. I printed, I don't know, like six or seven of them before we came here tonight. And they all say the same thing, that this is a good business. And if we demo the building, this business can't just pick up and move. He's not selling widgets or making widgets. This is a living organism and it sounds like even the repairs themselves are going to put that organism at risk. So, I mean, even the repairs are, are damaging his business. That's my opinion. I think we should give more time.
I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to offer a devil's advocate viewpoint of that.
Sure.
All right. So he's had a thousand, over a thousand days since it was made obvious that there's no certificate of occupancy on the building. And there's been multiple communications in regards to things to be done prior to the act of God knocking down, down, down part of the building. And if he's running a good business, I'm not saying that to his customers, he's not running a good business. He also has, we also, we and he has an obligation to meet minimum code standards, just like we hold every other business accountable for in the city of Hutchinson. And it's an international building code that every other community has to also enforce. And I think it is, it's a mistake for a business owner to not make more proactive approach on trying to work within the guidelines, knowing full well that it is a monstrous, monstrous building and the costs associated with just small repairs spread out over 300,000 square feet can be ridiculously expensive. But at least making steps to move forward and communicating those steps since 2021 would go a long way in convincing me that this business is, this investment is important more to, more so than to the customers, but also to himself, any investors he might have and his employees within the facility and the community as a whole. Even just small steps, hey, we repaired three, we repaired three doors this month on your list of doors that need to be repaired. Here's what our plan is for next month. But it seems like there's, and I'm saying this, knowing full well this is off testimony from city staff, but I'm sure there's emails to back up because otherwise I doubt they would make the statements, that there's, there was a lack of communication, not once or twice, but over the course of years.
Mayor and council, if I may, the, the spirit of those discussions and the meetings that were had, whether I was present in or not, was how, how can we get this building repaired? And the spirit, and that was the spirit of those discussions to even avoid having the public hearing like this because it's awkward for everyone. And so those, the first letter was sent, I don't have my notes in front of me, was sent sometime in July. At least notifying them of here, here are the issues as we see them today. Also in recognizing that you don't have a certificate of occupancy, which is a prior issue before the building collapsed. Yes, there was a transition from our interim building official to Jason, but in order to compensate for that, we extended the deadline even further. At no point did we feel, and I'll let, you know, the fire department speak on this, building department speak on this, that we feel that any good faith was being reciprocated to give us something. Okay, just give us a shoring plan, engineering plan. It was sometime in October, I want to say the first week in October, where we did meet at city hall and an engineer was present and statements were made that, yeah, we'll get you something. Well, then I'd follow, hey, have we heard anything? No. Have we heard anything? No. And if the, if the, if the intention was that, well, because the public hearing is set, we don't want to touch the building, at no point was that even expressed then. Just to at least know where you're coming from. And so I just, again, I'm trying to highlight the communication piece, that it did not feel that there was any good faith reciprocated. Because believe me, we don't want to be in the business of putting people out of business either. It's certainly not an image that the city as staff would want to portray to the community. But from their standpoint, we do have a duty to act. And so we did not want to shy away from the fact of, well, we're just going to go through the process of this public hearing because unfortunately, that's the point where we're at now. And I can let Paul speak on this a little bit. But can, the issue for tonight, because there's so many things baked into this. It's demo or repair, but because they don't have a certificate of occupancy, they shouldn't even be in the building. So if they are ordered to repair or some leniency granted, whatever, whatever may come from this, we still have to let them know, like, you, you can't be in the building and that the only people that should be in the building are those that are making the repairs. So from a business operations standpoint, they'll have to work through that. But Paul, if, if I said anything incorrectly there, please let me know. But I, I did want to at least highlight where staff was coming from, that there was a lot of good faith effort on all of our ends, so.
So from a business operational standpoint, if we gave you more time, how many days could you stay out of that building and not touch those worms? If it's, if it's unsafe for people to be in there? Because from our standpoint, we're, we're basically worried about unsafe conditions for everyone involved. And so how long would you be able to stay away from those worms until that could get fixed and be safe for somebody to return?
We'd probably need at least a week to condition some items, condition the rows. And these are rows that we've been allowed to be on or near during this time, but. But, but it also means that we don't have any of that product to sell.
And I understand that, but at some point we have to draw a line in the sand going, this is what we need to do to make things right?
That even with the demo going on, already looking at how we would go and just stabilize and not really be touching those main rows. Our most we've left in moving material, we've left our areas that have the most worms there. But with Christmas right there, I mean, I really feel like I kind of think that some of it would depend on the shoring contractor. Like if they're really, if they get their approval and they're really going in the next few days, then we were already anticipating not being in those, even though it's nine hundred feet away of not being there. So it's not a chicken and egg, but it's, it is a little bit.
It's a risk factor for us that we say, okay, go ahead, then something happens, then we're, it's back on us. Jason, so if they get their information submitted tomorrow, the contractor, how soon could they be approved to actually do the work?
Well, if they get it submitted tomorrow, I think we could turn it around fairly quickly within the next few days that they could start work for the shoring. Yeah, if they were to present the engineer plans and contractor get licensed and we could turn it around pretty quickly.
I mean, I, I'm kind of in the mindset of going, I don't want to shut a business down. Because if, if he leaves that building, what's going into that building? As long as it's safe for people to do what they need to do to, to, to make it happen, I, I feel like we should grant the thirty days. And then, and say, okay, now what has happened in thirty days?
I think there's other conditions that are unsafe in the building besides that.
I agree with that.
Other collapsed structures. So, I mean, regardless, two things, there's other conditions that are present. The second thing is they don't have a certificate of occupancy to be there in the first place as a legal business. I think regardless of, there needs to come a point. We've given due time up to the first of December and then till tonight. And I think there needs to come a point, and that point being fairly quickly on our part to board up the building and remove any occupancy from the building. Whether that be tomorrow or, or this week.
Is, would the, so you had mentioned temporary structures to put that product in?
Yes.
Is that, is that something that could be acceptable to, to get, to get things where they need the right direction, I guess they say?
I don't, I don't know if you have enough room on that property to, for temporary structures. I mean, you do on the, on the east side, most certainly on the parking lot. So that'd be a consideration and, and talk through that about temporary structures when we talk about zoning regulations and things like that.
Well, I know sometimes you get tied up in the business side of things and you forget about some of the stuff you need to really take care of. And I just, I don't know, I think if we could make something happen, you know, I'm willing to go down that road. But if, you know, it, it's going to have to be all safe conditions or I'm not, and I don't want to be involved with it. It's just my two cents.
I, I was here back in July, obviously when this started. So I have a little bit more background than Jason did. You know, when we went out there on July eleventh and we encountered some of the employees and we were, we told them that we were shutting them down because it was an unsafe building. One of the employees actually said to us, we've been waiting for this day to happen. I had warned other employees that this was going to come because they knew what bad conditions the building was in. I also want to point out that at that time, we had the right as the building official to shut the building down, to lock it up and say, you can't get in here. But we knew because of the type of product that was inside, that worms could die. So as a good faith effort, we said, we will give you time to get those worms out. We thought, how long does it take to get worms out of this building? A week, two weeks, a month? Well, we gave him from July eleventh until November first. So almost four months to get the worms out. And then when November first came, we gave him longer and longer. So one point I want to make is that the building official has determined the building is unsafe and that people can't get in the building. And so if we lock up the building and we don't let people back in until it's safe, that's going to be until there's fire suppression, until everything has been fixed. So I just want to make sure that that's clear for everybody.
And I would, I, I would agree with what Matt was saying. You know, you called me early in July. I hadn't heard from you since our meeting at the chamber. You disappeared, you called, I made a phone call. You said you'd have the stuff out November first. That's what you told me. And, and here we are.
So we thought we could meet that. So when the building was locked up, they had just fed the worms. And so our normal practice in the summer is not to be actively, they like to dive, that's our safest spot for them. They were fed, we shut down, they weren't able to water that week. And then, so that whole process of bringing the worms back up so we could even get to them was significantly more delayed than what it normally would be. Normally that process doesn't start until sometime in September. I don't think we got many worms out until end of September, end of October, and that's still been a very stunted process. It's, I know to anybody else, it seemed like very easy to deal, just go grab worms, but it's not quite as easy as that.
Well, I don't want to be like John, but I want to ask you, why did you tell me that then?
It's fair.
So I really did think that we were going to be able to get it out. And looking at some of our, our calendars and, but also moving, moving the material out from a, it went out a lot slower, only one small door. And could have gone out faster and then put it outside and destroyed it. Yeah, and we did have some outside and we were testing, it did go and we were destroying it. And, and then we moved a lot more outside and then it got rained on. And so, I mean, that's part of the reason why it's on that east, east area is because we couldn't do anything with it. It's, it's going to be months before it would even be dry enough. And so to some extent, keeping it on that west side is our fastest spot because it can go right from there to the screener. When you move it outside, you're dealing with a lot more changes and also just destroying. It's not just potting soil. It's not just something that's, it's about the living aspect. And so, yeah, in hindsight, the, the first request would have been much similar to the request in late September and again tonight.
All right. Anybody else have anything?
It's the public affairs.
My name's Shelby.
Do you have any more questions for me?
Not at this time. Shelby?
My name is Shelby. I'm a farmer from Sedgwick County. I wanted to remind Dan a message he sent in an agricultural chat group. That spans more than just Reno and Sedgwick County, but across the state and across the nation. On July twenty-fifth, he messaged us and said, he sent a picture of the collapse. He said, a few weeks ago, one of our, one of the windstorms, we had a roof collapse. No one was hurt. We had just mostly cleaned out this dock, but it also left us without the use of the whole building. We are currently moving product out, selling off castings, liquid and worms. While we also look for a new home or a few new homes in different areas. Any help would be greatly appreciated. I wanted to remind Dan of that, so, thank you. And if you'd like to see it, I'll show it to you.
No, no, that helps me. Anybody else from the public have any public comment, comments on this item?
Thank, thank you guys. I appreciate everything you're doing. My name is Darren Unruh. I live down in Causston Township. And I've used Fed and Happy for several years now. And I, I think that we need to consider a, a couple of things. One, was there mistakes made? Absolutely. Absolutely, there was mistakes made. But this has bigger ramifications than the city of Hutchinson or Reno County or even the state of Kansas. There's a definite movement that I've been involved in called the Soil Health Movement, Food is Health Movement. Food, the regional and local food systems that are bringing back, we definitely need this product. We definitely need, we, I don't have anything prepared, guys, so, so listen, I'm just speaking extemporaneously here. This product I've used on my own farm here in Reno County, Yoder Township, Causston Township, and I've seen the benefits and I've seen what it can do. I've seen it can reduce our dependency on synthetics, chemicals, fertilizers and everything to make a healthier, better food product. I know that there's mistakes made. All I'm asking is to give some time. Dan understands, I believe, I hope, I know. He understands that there's, there's things that need to be corrected here. But I want you guys to please consider that there's more, there, there's more ramifications to shutting him down than what we're seeing here tonight. This is, this is a national health movement as I, as I see it, especially with the new incoming administration and what's going on and what I've been involved. All I'm saying is, I know what this product can do. All I'm asking for is a little more time for him in order to make the corrections that obviously need to be made. Mr. Richardson, you brought up some great points that, that there is steps that need to be taken. If we can just get a little more time in order to get this, keep this product produced here locally, it can have a bigger ramification than what we've all been talking about tonight. That was my only point that I wanted to make and thank you guys for your consideration on this.
Thanks for speaking to us. Anybody else?
I'm Brad Byer, one of Shelby's husband, farmer. This doesn't just affect Dan, it affects all of us, all the farmers that use his product. It's, it's not going to just shut one business down. You're looking at shutting maybe farmers down that don't use his product now. So I, I mean, that's kind of important to us. We, we need his product to help grow produce for our community, to sell to our community, to feed our community. And Dan's product is a big portion of that. So I, I don't want to lose my job if he loses his. That's, so, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Anybody else?
My name is Quincy Baker. I've sat here and listened and I, I want to ask a few questions to Dan. So first, you said it was a, a cross na- national and international map. How many locations do you run?
The, the questions will need to be directed to the council.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, then I just want to take a few, I want the council to take into a few considerations then. So I'll direct more open ended questions then. I want you to take into consideration the amount of locations that Dan runs. He said that it was national and he does, he mentioned a location in Canada. When taken into consideration, the certi- certificate of occupancy, not all regions require a certificate of occupancy. When taking in consideration, consideration, taking into consideration a business that operates nationally and multi-nationally, internationally, it may not be a first consideration to get a certificate of occupancy, especially in a business that is maybe not ready to get a certificate of occupancy. That may be something that, for a business owner that is passed on. So I know that was highlighted as something that is of worry. So I don't want you to shut down a business because of a certificate of occupancy when that is not even a requirement in many, many regions across this nation and other nations. So that is something that I found out in just my little bit of research on my phone today. I also, so I am someone who wants to push for giving this business owner an extension. This is something that's very passionate about people in this community. Agriculture is something that is very passionate and for me, as well as many people in this community. I also want to take this time that I have here because I missed my opportunity to speak this morning, to speak on something that is a dangerous and unsafe structure that is planned to be built within the city of Hutchinson. So thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm here to, as a concerned citizen, discuss proposed natural gas plant south of Hutchinson and why this project now.
We're, this needs to be about the,
The unsafe and dangerous structure within the city of Hutchinson?
Yeah, that needs to be specifically about this structure.
Okay, so as a concerned citizen of Hutchinson, I am asking the city council for a time to speak on, since I missed the opportunity.
At the next meeting, you can speak during open comment.
And that will be January seventh, correct?
It's the first and third Tuesday evening at five thirty.
Three weeks from now? January seventh, correct?
Haven't looked at the calendar.
For this meeting, that's not to say you can't voice your concerns outside of this, these chambers.
Okay, we're, what forums may I as a, a concerned citizen of Hutchinson voice my concerns today or tomorrow?
Every other forum that everyone else has an opportunity to, but we have a policy within these chambers on when things can be brought up. And right now we're in public hearing on this particular subject.
You, I gave you my business card. You can call, you can email, you can text me, whatever is most convenient for you. All of our contact information is posted on the city website.
I appreciate that, that, those forums have not been readily available to me. Or known to me, I should say, not available.
Sure.
Wrong words. Okay, I apologize. I'll get back on track.
With the building on these four?
Yes, sorry.
Okay.
And not, not to come down harsh, we have three Ps, policy, procedure and problem. So we can't just talk about a problem, we have to make sure we follow policy and procedure as best as we can, so.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, okay. So I already addressed the certificate of occupancy and the locations. And that stressed that that could cause strain on a business owner that is multinational. That is now multinational because he mentioned the location in Canada, I believe. So I want you to take that consideration and, and I also address the, being a important part of agriculture business, which many citizens already address. I also, he did also bring up the point of this, the by word of mouth business. This business is not a corporation business. He, he, this is a, like he said, like Stacy Goss pointed out on, Vice pointed out, this is a, this is a true small business, which is I am a strong advocate for. He spread this, like he, Dan pointed out, by word of mouth. This isn't a advertisement, I'm going to spend a ton of money on this. He, this is a true grassroots movement that he has made happen. And I don't want to see the city of Hutchinson strike it down. I want, I would like to see us allow this growth to continue. Thank you.
All right, thank you Quincy. Anybody else?
Thank you guys for allowing me to speak on any old topic that I have nothing, no idea before I walked in here that was on the agenda or anything about it until I was presented. So thank you. I'm going to have some ignorant comments and just bear with me. I'm just going to speak on behalf of like the, like the population of the city of Hutchinson as a whole, what you guys represent. If you allow, this is my opinion, if you allow a business to operate illegally for a thousand days, or at least they knew they were operating for a thousand days, that's three years. Sure, oh, I don't want to put a business out of, I don't want to put a business out of business. You're not doing that. It's the owner of the business and it's, it's the landlord that are putting themselves out of business. You guys are not, don't take that burden on you. You, if you do and allow a business to operate illegally, You, if you do and allow a business to operate illegally, unsafe to the workers, thank you, Mr. Garza, for a super long time, thank you, Mr. Richardson, you are eroding the trust of the public to be able to gain employment in a safe environment, uh, walk into a building, uh, in a safe environment, you're putting a, it, you, it, like, if I were an Uber driver and I was, like, driving a car with no registration that was gonna catch on fire on public roads, and I said, "Well, I'm, I'm, I'm helping all these people and I'm giving them food and everybody loves me and, and I, I'm trying my hardest," but you're, but you're putting everybody in danger, you're disobeying the laws that we as a community have established that we should follow. I hope I'm, I hope I'm making sense, I'm kinda rambling. But I'm sitting back there thinking, "Well, heck, you're letting this guy get away with anything, I'm gonna park my car on my lawn, I'm gonna run a business out of my house, I'm gonna run a daycare without a license," because you guys are letting it. So if you let something like this, you're gonna have to let everything else happen. I don't care if the regulation is, you gotta have pink flowers on your front lawn, if it's in the rules and we've agreed upon it, it's your guys' job to uphold that, or else you're letting them get away with something, and that, "Oh, why can't I, why can't I break all the rules? Why can't I build a second story in my house?" I hope that makes sense. Um, plus the Fire Marshal says it's dangerous. And all this says is, "Public hearing to consider structure to be unsafe and dangerous." That's all we should be considering. We shouldn't consider, "Oh, man, I've worked really hard and I, I don't wanna lose my job or my business." All that we should be considering is public hearing to consider unsafe, and the Fire Marshal says unsafe. Seems very similar to me. Anything else?
No, thank you for your comments, Nick.
Thank you.
I have a question. Um, under the hypothetical that we allow some time that, to work through some of these things, and the city is listed as additional insured on, let's say, builder's risk policy, moving inventory out of the way to clear out for construction purposes would be part of the construction process, I would say, in a prudent manner. So as far as being, this is all hypothetical to be investigated, right? Because as far as the city being liable or having some type of insurance policy if an accident were to happen, while materials being removed for the construction process, is that a possibility that I would like to know, or have some kind of discussion on?
I think being listed as an insured actually holds us liable, whereas now, so we are not held liable based on boards and directors' insurance, we're protected. The city is-
I'm talking about the city itself being additionally insured in case there's an accident, so it'd be-
Being listed as an, as an additionally insured, I think opens you up for liability. There's no reason that we would be listed as an additionally insured. Um, we didn't ask that of the atrium, we've never asked that of any other bonding demo type of project before. That, I don't think that's a, is that a common practice?
I don't think it's really a common practice, but, um, you know, I don't think they'd have to remove any product at this point to shore it up or do the type of work that they wanna do now. I mean, if you're speaking of the further work that has to happen on the rest of the structure, yes.
I'm talking about condemnation and demolition of the property.
Yes.
Would they be able to remove their personal inventory from the property in an amount of time?
I think that amount of time would be upon Mr. Razor and what we would allow him, um, but, you know, to this point, um, we've been unsuccessful in getting that to happen. And I think to my comment earlier, we probably have more product on the property at this point than, you know, we had a month ago. And I think with even looking out at the, um, amount of dirt that's out on the southeast property, um, I would say just the amount of dirt that's been moved from the northeast part of the structure, um, on the inside, um, that dirt seems to be a lot less over there than, and, and it's just kinda inconsistent with what we were talking about earlier.
Yeah, and I need to separate out, yeah, so, if, if it-
Whatever the inventory was, would we allow the property owner to remove their personal inventory from the property before it gets demolished? Is that something that we allow?
We let Mr. Joseph go take-
And it's still their property.
Right, we let him go take mattresses out of a four-year unoccupied building that people had done all sorts of things on, including make drugs.
Could be worm castings in there, too.
Could, it, right, like, we let him go take his stuff out. I don't think he had a certificate of occupancy any longer.
Okay.
He wasn't operating by any means, but.
I don't have any more questions.
Any, any more for the public hearing? I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, next item.
Item number eight, ordinance of the motions, A, consider a building and unsafe and dangerous structure within the city of Hutchinson located at 30405 East Fourth Avenue.
Do I have a motion in a second for that, or?
I have, there's, I have something I'd like to say. Um, I do think there's more discussion to be had. Um, so, we just built, or in the process of building a pipe out to Yoder, right, to provide them with water, because their drinking water is contaminated by farming, by, I don't know, I'm not a farmer, so I don't know what that stuff is, um, fertilizer, nitrates, whatnot. And then we turn around and we have a business who is working to remedy that on a, on a national and international scale. Um, we're an agricultural community, if this business and this building were located, I don't know, six miles and, in two directions, they'd be in the county. There is no zoning in the county, right? So he could work in a-
There's zoning in the county.
Well, but there's not all of this, there's not all of the same zoning requirements. So, again, like, we're in a place where we can be not business friendly, or we can hold fast to zoning and, and whatnot. Um, I, I don't consider myself an anarchist, but like, people made up zoning, and I get, it's all there to protect us and, and that sort of thing in the social contract, but, um, we can, we can step back on some of that and we can allow for variances, just like, um, Matt and other staff have along the way, that's the human element that's built into the policy. Um, at the end of the day, even the enforcement comes down to a person going and putting up the "do not enter" sign. Um, I think we have an opportunity to be a part of something that's much bigger than us, and all it requires is a little bit of time and a little bit of grace to an existing good business who maybe isn't a good businessman because he didn't do all of the things to get the certificate of occupancy along the way, but, um, that doesn't mean that this isn't a viable business and that it isn't good for the community and for society as a whole.
I'm not condemning the business, I'm condemning the building.
Right.
And how do you answer to, well, just say, to me, when I did my development downtown, when I tried my darndest to follow every rule that was laid before me and to communicate, and-
And you told me the reason that you ran for office is so that would never happen to anybody again.
Correct. So we're just not gonna have any rules?
Nope, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, give him some time to come to, to come into compliance, more time to come into compliance.
More than three years?
Yep.
Because that's what he's had. I think you were on it on this one.
How do you, how do you answer to any other person that is trying to follow the rules that this is okay because it's a, it's a, a natural product?
This one act of strict compliance does not make up for every other home and building and business operating without a certificate. This does not make everything right in the city of Hutchinson. This does not right every single wrong done by us or previous councils.
Certainly agree with that.
Or by us or previous code enforcement. This doesn't, there was a car parked on a yard on my way to work today.
Where do you start?
Right. This just feels really harsh, and this isn't a starting point that I want to operate with.
I would be on the aspect of giving that 30 days to see what happens. I mean, we're already, we're already at three years, what's 30 more days?
Thirty days with Christmas and New Year's built in.
Well, that's fine, I mean, we've had three years, so you can figure it out. Um, you know, if, if they wanna get it done, they can make it happen.
Do we wanna table the motion until the second, until the first meeting in February? Is that what you're kinda, is that kinda where the feel is?
Well, not necessarily, because it would be the fact of, there would be some stipulations to that. Some things have to happen between now and then.
There are two meetings between now and then, though we could bring this resolution back. The reason the resolution is on here tonight is because tonight is the first possible, um, night that it could have been, according to the state statute, which we are following, to give the notice and hold the public hearing and hold him accountable for the demolition.
So yes, and I guess I would be saying that I would table that. However, I wanna, I want some, like, the allowance of people in that building. I mean, that's gotta be adhered to. I mean, because the only people that can really get into that building is people that need to fix it. I mean, they may have to do a little bit to, um, stabilize their worms, but then after that, I'm like, it, that building needs to be fix- and I know it's not up to code, I know everything, there's some other code issues that need to be addressed, but the, the structural is probably the main thing at the moment.
Yeah, other than, we're taking on some mitigated risk in regards to someone getting hurt inside the building and not being able to, the life safety aspect that's been going on for a few years. We're basically condoning that for 30 days. Like, we, we, we are okay with this facility for 30 days for employees to be in there and working.
No, I, I don't think I'm condoning it for 30 days for employees to be in there. I think I'm condoning it for 30 days to get the building fixed so employees can get back in there.
Okay.
But not every code will be fixed within 30 days.
No.
It's possible that the structure could be repaired and shored up, but there's absolutely no way possible that I think everything is fixed within 30 days.
It's just a step forward, I guess.
Mr. Razor, you go, you hear what we're talking about, you hear the commissioners talk?
I do.
Um, they made some good points, um, over there. Do you think you can get, are we wasting our time? Can you get something done in 30 days? Talk to me.
I believe that the damaged area can be removed. Um, the damaged area can be removed, it can be shored up. Um, what else on the list? I'm trying to formulate, had, as I was listening right now, and also trying to think the triage of where's the best place to start, um, on that list. Regardless, I think, getting the damaged portion removed, and I know that there's old electrical not hooked up, um, I know that we need exit lights, um-
I guess what I'm saying is this, this is how I understand this, what they're saying, they could tell me if I'm wrong or not. You can't have no employees in it other than the people that are fixing the stuff. Am I right? So can you withstand 30 days without product being moved, 30 days we're giving you to fix it up without no employees or anything in there? Um, because you have to understand that, that's, you can't have no employees in it doing any work. That's part what I'm hearing, am I right or wrong?
You're correct.
Okay.
So we have, we have finished product that is in, there is a separate loading dock that is accessible, and the, previously been approved that it was okay to have it in there, um, and so we've been staging product there, as well as there's a, another building on the southeast corner, um, that is somewhat isolated. Um, the isolated corner, I think we could just leave that there for the next 30 days, assuming we could get it at some point. Um, and then the dock, those doors are on the south. As where I'd go is if, um, for that 30 days, if we can go and, um, get some water, get some food, um, basically tomorrow, tomorrow, the next day, um, get some things that would stabilize that, um, and also knowing that the building is exposed, um, so already understanding that, and at the same time, executing with the shoring contractor, getting that going. Um, and then I'd probably send a list of acceptable items that we could do, such as removing, um, removing electrical, um, panels or, or unused electrical panels, um, send a list, get that approved or not approved, but other than that, not having access, I can live with that the next 30 days.
I, I feel like, um, Jason, i- in one of our documents, Jason Lady has provided the full list in June or July of all of the items that you need to come into, come, uh, that you need to touch in order to come up to, um, compliance. Um, I would encourage you to get with him tomorrow and prioritize which ones, um, and what progress, define what progress looks like, because if you're not allowed in there to, um, install the fire extinguishers, for instance, you could purchase the fire extinguishers that you're gonna need within the next two weeks. Um, how many do you need? He could tell you, or, um, Fire Marshal could tell you. Um, those are the kind of steps that you'd have to take in, in my mind, in order to be acting in good faith over the next couple of weeks, along with the hard work that's gonna work, that's gonna be done by your contractor to shore up the building.
So I guess I don't, I don't wanna overpromise on the list, I guess, so I'm, um, but-
We don't wanna put you out of business and see how we struggle with this, but we struggle with this. We want you to have a business. My, I just looked at my emails, she's right. This thing is full of emails that are favorable for you, but we still have a responsibility.
And going to Councilman Richardson's, um, comment earlier, the business today isn't the same business that it was in '21. In '21, I mean, from Sunday night until Tuesday, I could be in two countries and seven states, like, and we didn't have the employees. It was all on just to go and get established what we have today. And so, yes, was it a big building then? Yes. But I was going 100 to 120 hours a week as hard as I could just to get it out there. This movement that was being talked about and some of the products that we do, that market just wasn't there then, um, and we sold worms, and that's how we survived, and so, I mean, it was put them on an airplane or, and hand-deliver them, or set them up at another farm. So it was very, very different than it is today even.
Yeah.
And so, do I wish that more had been done? Yes. Did I expect more was gonna really start last year and, um, and this summer, um, because our normal is that we don't screen and that this summer was gonna be on cleanup and making that progress, and, so.
So let me ask this in regards to the resolution. If we were to condemn the building and say it's unsafe and dangerous, they still have 30 days to make repairs to the building at that point before we make any new decisions?
Yes.
Yeah, either order to demo or repair, is kinda the option. Sounds like those are the options.
Council, let me clarify for you on that.
Please.
If you, if you look at the ordinance itself, it says you're to fix a reasonable time within which the repair removal of such structure shall be commenced and shall require a cash bond. The maximum time allowed for repair to demolition shall be 120 days unless extended by the city council.
Okay. So even if we were to make, if we were to pass, approve this resolution, it can, it can still be repaired and work can be done on it, and we can decide when in such time we move forward with any new actions. And on that basis, I would make that motion to approve a resolution condemning an unsafe and dangerous structure within the city of Hutchinson, located at 30405 East Fourth, and authorize the mayor to sign.
And then I would, I would propose that we have the January date to bring this back to the table to, um- to discuss and see what's been done within that thirty days if we agree on the, pass the motion for the resolution tonight.
I would amend my motion to include what Mr. Lady said.
So what is the motion?
Motion is what I just read with the reconvening to discuss on the first meeting in February? Is that what she said?
I think you said thirty days.
I think it was the thirty days. So what I put in the resolution was that the twenty-first?
But what would be our next meeting?
Twenty-first of January. So we meet on the seventh and the twenty-first in January.
Assuming it gets published on Friday, that'd be the twentieth, so you could have thirty days expire and have a meeting on the twenty-first.
Then we can decide to move it forward or extend it based on what's happening. And if things, if there are causes for delay that are reasonable, like we've had twenty days of snow or something like that, I understand that. But that would be, then that would be my motion based on meeting the second meeting of January to discuss the thirty days of progress.
So we pass the resolution saying we go ahead and condone it, right?
We're saying it's condemned and we're stating it's unsafe and dangerous to the public.
Okay, that's the only motion we're having.
As of right now, yes.
So he has, and then he has until we come back the next meeting on our next?
The second meeting in January, we'll review his thirty days of progress and decide if we want to extend the timeline or if we want to move forward with demolition.
So what does that mean in regards to the business owner for accessibility to the building? Does that, does that mean that it's?
It's, it's technically, it's unsafe and dangerous and locked down right now.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
That would be up to city staff to allow access to it, just like what happened at the atrium for personal belongings.
I, Dan, what you just said, I'm going to trust you and go on faith with this. I'm going to second John's motion. And I'm going to, I'm going to trust you in good faith that in thirty days, you're showing us something on repairing and working towards a satisfactory resolution, so we don't have to tear this building down.
Without, I mean, without access, everything becomes a whole lot harder. I would ask if you would table it. Still, we have to go and repair, start everything with the shoring company tomorrow. But I think there's going to be a lot more unintended, by condemning it right now, like our acts, not having the access, and I think there becomes a lot more unintended, including insurance.
You should have access for construction purposes, just like any other owner would have access with their contractor to work on the building. And I believe that would give some opening to go and adjust some of your inventory while the contractor is on site.
And that's what the ordinance envisions, because it talks about repairing or removing. I mean, if he couldn't have access to the building, he couldn't do any of those things.
You still have access to your building.
Yes. And Dan, I want you to make Jason your best friend. And try to get some movement forward on this. What's the hesitation?
I think with the condemnation that anybody who's backing me says, don't spend another dollar. And that, that we're not actually going to get it, ever get true access back to the building. That, I mean, we've got limited, we needed more than twenty days to get the rest of the material out anyways. And we definitely, if we weren't able to feed the worms or the material that we have in there, if we just move it all outside, we basically destroy it. We definitely destroy the worms. And, and also knowing from a customer aspect that this is the time that our customers place their orders for this coming year. And I would fully anticipate that that immediately cease. And I would, I would ask that you would table it, and still knowing that we still have to continue. I mean, we have to execute the shoring agreement tomorrow and, and get that going as well. And that, that way, the next time we meet, even if it's, even if it's in two weeks, three weeks, instead of in February, too.
Well, there's a motion and a second. Does anybody have any further discussion?
Can I make it come there real fast?
Sure.
Regardless of whether you table this tonight or whether you pass this resolution tonight, it's still deemed an unsafe and dangerous structure, and we still need to limit access to the building. So, you know, the charge tonight as council members is not as an unsafe and dangerous structure. Do we condemn it or do we order them to repair it? So we as a staff are deeming it an unsafe and dangerous structure, so we're still going to limit that access to the building, regardless of the, of the table being, of the motion being tabled tonight or not.
And I would just throw this out there for the council as well. We've heard a lot from Dan, but we haven't heard anything from Pat, the actual property owner. Because he is the one that is charged with fixing the structure. So I think we need to hear from Pat and to understand what his commitment to this issue is. So I, I would like to at least kind of know what is going on there.
I mean, I'm the one paying for it, and I'm going to pay for shoring starting tomorrow. But, and Pat and I have already tentatively worked out a purchase agreement. I paused it in September when, when we got locked out of the building for the second time. But I think the condemnation is going to make things significantly harder to do anything. And I think from the business perspective at that location, it kills it for, I think it makes it a lot harder to, to get it all done. I mean, because part of this time too is that, you know, we've been trying to process of setting up two other, very small, but still something in, in other communities, just trying to, have something survive, but it, that stretching of resources, when, like, how much do you continue to put into Hutchinson when, knowing that you're condemned? And that, knowing that we've got a very good year ahead of us, that are you just sinking, just sunk, sunk money every dollar that goes in? But I mean.
Any further discussion from the council?
It stinks, the whole situation stinks.
It's not a good, it's not a good, Jason, so the same parameters are going to fall, whether we vote it in or we don't vote it in, of an unsafe building.
It already exists, it's already.
I'm just trying to understand.
There is a certificate of occupancy, he shouldn't be in the building. No matter what we vote on tonight, he shouldn't be in the building.
Right.
That's what Jason just said.
I know, I'm just clarifying. I don't like.
We need to vote.
Do you, do you need more clarification?
No.
Good.
Thanks.
We're going to put him out of business, guys.
I, I say he's putting himself out of business by not following the rules for three years.
I know.
And operating illegally with no certificate of occupancy, after being reminded multiple times. And what's happening is we've got to the point where the building structure has started to collapse. And now, unfortunately, it's putting a business at risk because steps weren't taken to protect that business if it was such an investment. That's where I'm at.
And I can tell you where I'm at. I feel like we've shown good faith in three years. We will continue to show good faith as long as we're, as long as that's reciprocated to us. Whether it's labeled condemned, or we put this off, or we're talking word semantics, in my opinion. So that's where I'm at. There's no way in the world I want to shut down a business, and that's not our intention here. I don't, at least not my intention with the motion. It's, it's an intention to move forward.
Yeah, I feel like we're fighting pretty hard to keep this business around. If not, we'd have voted on this immediately and done with it.
Right. So that's my promise to you, Dan.
Just the other side is that I haven't been the owner of this building. So it's also hard to spend a lot of money on a building that you don't own. And the condemnation makes me really wonder, like, why in the world do I buy this building? I just had all my inventory locked out. I understand the mistakes that were made too. And I also understand the fight that I was in during that time.
So if we, if we condemn this building, will you walk away from it or will you stay here and do what you need to do to make it right?
I'm at a hard, I mean.
I mean, it's a question, because I'm really fighting for you, and it's just like, I'm. Because it's the same parameter, just a motion versus a not motion.
I can see how it's the same parameter. But I think on some other financial sides, I don't think it's the same parameter. I think having a condemned building, I think radically changes a lot of other things that, from the business aspect going on, versus the unsafe and, and making sure that Jason's my best friend. I think from a business perspective, finance perspective, insurance perspective, condemned versus non-condemned is a whole lot different. But I know, I mean, the actions have to be the same regardless, but I think the, I really just think the finance side tomorrow morning ends up being very, very different. The building's condemned tonight.
So the best thing for you is for us just to table it. It gives you enough time, am I right or wrong? I know you did wrong, I know you.
I know I did wrong too, and I do believe that the tabling is, is the best.
You do know if we go, we don't go with the, with my emotion, if we don't go, if we do go with it, there's, there's hanging out there for us. If we do go with the table, there's hanging out there for us.
I think, so as I see it, if tomorrow, if you guys table it, tomorrow, we execute shoring and things are moving forward, then in two weeks or whenever your next meeting is, it probably is still tabled. If tomorrow comes and nothing happens and your next meeting comes, then I believe that you guys condemn it without even a, a second thought at that point.
Yeah, that's what I mean. The only thing I can do to help you, which, I'm going against my council members, which they're right. I mean, they're right, but, you know, I try to be a fair commissioner, and I know it's going to put you out of business.
I mean, I think if, if we don't make progress these next two weeks or, I don't want to misspeak on when your next meeting is, but, I mean, I, so I don't necessarily think it's tabling it until February. I think if it's tabled and nothing happens, I think the next opportunity you guys get, it is, it is condemned and, and also if that happens, there's also no chance of Jason being my best friend either.
I'll withdraw my second.
I would like to table this. I mean, I, I know we need to make this motion, but I just want to.
Make a motion?
I want to make a motion to table this for thirty days.
I'll second that.
Richardson?
Yes.
Darza?
Yes.
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 Don't let me down.
Thank you.
Don't let her sit down, I guess I should say that.
Next time, actually, let's have a break. Five-minute break, we'll reconvene at five minutes until nine.
Department, probably won't see anything on that for several months. We have the construction of the project going through basically all next year. So it's not something that's super pressing anyway. So on this slide, we do have our residential roadwork projects scheduled in this neighborhood for 2026. So in the year in van- in next year, in 2025, we'll be working on sidewalk repairs and some of the other infrastructure repairs. So that'll actually help us connect the various areas that citizens highlighted, like the Avenue A Park and the Boys and Girls Club to the area for the Southwest Bricktown neighborhood. So the, the, this neighborhood is to be chip sealed in 2026, so we'll do sidewalks in 2025. And the area around the Boys and Girls Club is our 2027 chip seal project, so we'll do the sidewalks in 2026 there. So our plan is to have all these areas connected by repaired sidewalks by the end of 2026. Obviously, if there's some other areas connectivity issues that the, that the public's interested in, we'll be working in those areas all the next couple of years. So we're, we're interested in getting feedback on that, too. We also had some feedback that perhaps it wasn't clear to the residents on what the portion of the project on B will look like. So we didn't have these rendered for this. We actually had them from a previous study. But we have a couple of 3D views of what the ends of Avenue B look like adjacent to the Woody Seats, but perhaps make it a little more clear for everyone what that area's gonna look like. So the bids, we requested bids and we received three bids from different contractors. We had an engineer's estimate that came in at about $4.7 million for the two combined scopes. There's a water line and a, and a street set that we combined. And two of those bids came in under the engineer's estimate, which is a great position to be in. And one of them did come over the bid, or over the engineer's estimate. So we originally took the bids, tabulated them and compiled them, and reviewed the requirements that we'd laid out in the bidding documents. The lowest bidder, Kansas Concrete, at the time, didn't meet the criteria that we had spelled out in the bid documents. So we went ahead and wrote a recommendation to the city manager for the next lowest bidder for Donlenger. However, subsequent to that, we held a meeting with Kansas Concrete to go over, in part, some of the deficiencies in their bid, so they could be clear on what we were looking for in the bidding process, but also just to get to know them and understand their qualifications a little more. It's a, it's something I've run off, run into before where a fairly new venture doesn't have that much of a resume as that new venture, but the individuals that comprise that venture do have substantial experience collectively. So we got a chance to talk to Kansas Concrete about that and understand it, and then, excuse me, Kansas Concrete, of their own initiative, requested an update to some of the paperwork that's produced by KDOT, that's part of the bid package. And they actually got updated qualifications out of a state agency in like a span of two days, which is impressive. So they supplied that information to us, and our department took it into account and had a fairly lengthy discussion about whether or not this was, this was a fair and equitable thing to consider for the other potential bidders, because they hadn't necessarily been granted the same talk. So after our department reviewed it for a bit, in my engineering judgment, I determined that this didn't substantially affect their bid in any way. The underlying qualifications were still the same as the company had before. This was basically the paperwork documenting what those qualifications are. So I determined that Kansas Concrete's bid was actually the lowest qualified bid, and I revised my recommendation. And then you guys got that as part of the update, I think, on Monday. And that's it. My recommendation, Donlenger was very gracious when I talked to him about it. They understood. I'm kind of excited to work with them on some other projects, but we're also very excited to work with Kansas Concrete on this project. They're enthusiastic. They showed great initiative in leaping through crazy hoops to get KDOT to grant them initial certifications, and I think, I think it'll be a success. Any questions?
Thank you, Evan. I'd like to have staff consider making a trailhead access at the end of Avenue A.
I was gonna say.
Oh, you can say it.
Hang on.
Go ahead.
No, you got it.
We've talked about that before. It's more, it was more of like a park at the end of A. I think that even if we just have a trail connectivity there, please work on that. I know that I've got Kansas Gas that's ready to help with that, several different people that would help us build that out. Second thing is, do you want to talk about the second thing?
Is it the elevation of how you could just jump over the highway?
No, you can talk about that in a minute. Lighting the water tower. I've had several calls, and I'm not talking about hundreds of thousand dollar, you know, a, a, a whole bunch of money for lights. Garza, you mentioned that that could be done by city staff, maybe just some uplighting.
Yes.
I really want to make sure that that, that area is completely different. And I was coming back into town late the other night, and we have this beautiful water tower and you can't even see it. So those are my two things. Now, what do you got?
Well, I was curious, so that, that spot does feel like a perfect spot for a trailhead. And I know that residents expressed some concern about having cars come down there and, and turn around and kind of what that would look like. But it, it just seems like it would be a great access point. What's the elevation change from the brick to where the first barrier is?
You mean at, hold on.
I think, was that B? That was at B.
At B, I think it's about 10 feet.
Okay.
If I remember correctly.
And KDOT doesn't require any other barriers besides that?
Um, so this is an older rendering, and I'd have to look at it, but they may not, just because there's a fairly significant horizontal distance.
Okay.
But I'm not a highway engineer, so I would have to check as well. But I'd be happy to look. I think that's all that's in the plans, but.
So you're asking if some, what are they called, bolsons need to be at the end of the street?
Yeah. I mean, if it is.
Oh, you're talking about like somebody ramping onto the Woody Seat?
Right.
Oh, oh.
Or just not being able to stop and.
Yeah.
Or coming from the other way, there's, I know that you can wreck into those things and you can go through them.
Yeah.
And there is a house at the bottom of, there's a house there. There's a couple houses there.
We can, we can certainly go over some of that. I don't know if this reflects what we had in the actual ends of the street on B. I thought I remembered us having at least some kind of concrete stoppers, but I'd have to look.
First I thought that sounded ridiculous, and now I kind of want to do it.
Right?
I understand the urge, it's not.
You don't mean put the concrete in.
No, I kind of want to jump the car.
Exactly, that's, that's the problem here.
This was gonna be a really hard pill to swallow with a $400,000 difference between Donlenger and Kansas Concrete, so I appreciate the work that you put in, not only to coach them through the deficiencies of their bid, but also in looking at, like you said, the individuals who work for the company versus just the company. I think that's really important, and it just proves that you're a, you're a great hire and you're an asset to the city. I know you've only been with us less than a year, right?
Yes, I think I'm coming up on three months now.
So you, you've definitely earned your keep with, with that bid right there.
Thank you, I appreciate it. It's a, it's a, it's pretty enjoyable, it's a part of the work I like.
Stacy's gonna ask for a raise, she's threatening to quit.
We better take a motion on this before things go ham.
Any other discussion?
No.
All right. Motion?
I move to accept a bid of Kansas Concrete for Phase Two of Woody Seat Freeway Repairs in the amount of $3,584,221.72 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
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 West 30th Avenue Reconstruction, Main Street to Adams Street, bid results.
This one is also me. So again, Evan Patterson, city engineer. So this is the phase of work on 30th Street that goes from Main Street through the intersection at 30th and Adams. We're removing the merge lane on the east end, and we're adding a multi-use trail on the north, and doing a little bit of water line and, and stormwater work down at the intersection of Adams and 30th. We plan on a subsequent project going from Adams down to Monroe later on, but we, we haven't taken that through design yet. This project will require some temporary road closures and a tentative detour route that we'll, we'll have to clarify once we, once we have a contractor onboard. Right now, we're proposing to take people down Main to 17th and over to Monroe and then back up. We'd looked at some of the other laterals through that section, and they're just not real great for truck traffic, so that's our primary concern there. We're also going to be closing the intersection at 30th and Adams. And then we've had a number of, excuse me, residents along Carlton who've been concerned about long-term use of Carlton as a bypass for 30th and then during this project, what, what they'll see. So we're proposing to put temporary road closures on the east end of Carlton, right where it comes into 30th and Main. I don't want to close off Carlton entirely, because we'll have 30th and Adams closed off, and that'd be a much more difficult route for anybody on that stretch of Carlton to get to their homes. So when we do the phase of work on the west half from Adams to Monroe, I don't think we'll have quite the same problem, because that intersection will be open. But here, I wanted to make sure people still had some access, even if they have to go up to Park and down to get their homes. Duration of the project, I think, is about six weeks. We, we requested and received bids from five different bidders, and we had requested bids for both concrete and asphalt, and we had an ad alternate for some additional work on Curtis just north of the 30th and Adams intersection. Ultimately, we decided we didn't have the budget for that next year, so we're gonna postpone that, and we decided that concrete was the preferable option for that. So the highlighted bid there from ProCon is the lowest, the, the least costly acceptable bid, and all of the documents should be attached to the memorandum, and I recommend that we award the contract to ProCon for $675,000, $676,476.30.
This 30th and Adams has four-way stops, why they have stop signs on all directions.
Correct. Yes.
You had no problems, more accidents there, no, no accidents hasn't gone up there? I've heard of a lot of problems there at 30th and Adams.
So that's the way I used to go to school when I went to Morgan, and that's the same around my kids' take. So I've always been a little paranoid about it, but I have not had the time to dig into the accident reports from that intersection since I've been in the position. But it is, it is on my list of things to do. I know we'd had a study at one point to replace it with a roundabout, but I have no idea what that concluded.
You wait until I'm not on the Northeast District, City Council member, before you propose that?
It may have said, "It's a terrible idea and don't do it."
Well, since I was a traffic signal technician, I always thought maybe you should have put a semi-actuated traffic signals there, so.
I don't, yeah, that's, I don't even know, we could have done a signal analysis there, too. That would be interesting.
Yeah, well.
Because it gets a lot of traffic.
It does, it does.
Especially with the school.
And a semi-actuated controller would work just fine there.
Yep, yep. And I owe, I owe the maintenance guy the schedule for construction, because one thing we did take into account is there's gonna be construction for a, a daycare right at the northwest corner of Morgan property, right by where it says temporary road closures. So we'll need to coordinate when that construction happens. We think we're okay, but we are gonna be closing off one of the possible truck routes with that intersection.
I would just like to say thank you, Enrico, for having that meeting with the Carlton, one of the Carlton residents. I followed up with him this afternoon, and he was very pleased with how we're working with them.
Good. I was surprised I didn't know him, I mean, he lives like a block from my parents, but.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
And I don't know what some of the words you used are.
Who?
Steve? But, yep, but I live up there, and so does John, and I don't have any issues going through there. I'm, I travel through there during some peak traffic hours, too, and peak school hours sometimes.
It's surprising, everyone seems to know how to do the four-way stop.
Yeah, because there's two right next to each other. I hate it, though. I, I don't like four-way stops.
I think he needs a vote.
Yeah, I don't want to read the numbers, though. Okay. I move to accept the bid of ProCon Construction LLC for Phase Two of the West 30th Avenue Reconstruction, Main Street to Adams Street in the amount of $675,476.30 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson?
I'm going to abstain. For, for no other reason, I've had conversations, I don't feel comfortable voting on them.
Sure.
Garza?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Boss? Yes.
Yes.
I have nine seats, consider.
Thank you all.
Of contract with Kansas Concrete LLC for parking lot removal at Atrium Hotel and Convention Center.
Good evening, council. Matt Williams, Director of Community Development. I'm here to talk about a change order to the contract with Kansas Concrete for the demolition of the atrium. We've been having discussions about removing the parking lot since this project first came up, and at the time, our goal was to hopefully preserve the parking lot for potential future use. But since then, since demolition has started at the building, our building official has reviewed the parking lot, and it was already pretty deteriorated with the heavy machinery that's out there, going through the demolition process and how much it's gonna be out there. We know the parking lot's gonna be in very bad shape, and it's gonna be significantly So the building official has deemed it unsafe, and let's see, parking, the parking lot is gonna propose, or gonna pose drainage challenges with all of the ruts in the parking lot. So for those reasons, staff is recommending the removal of the parking lot. We've spoken with Kansas Concrete, and they have submitted a change order outlining the plan for removing the parking lot. That includes demolition, bringing in dirt, grading the ground to address drainage needs, erosion control, and then seeding it for grass. So staff is recommending that the city council accept the change order by Kansas Concrete LLC for the amount of $124,860 and authorize the mayor to sign.
I have questions.
Yes.
What about all the underground utilities underneath the, the water lines and the big mains and stuff? Are those gonna be excavated as well?
Those are going to be addressed, so there is a stormwater line that runs under the parking lot that will be removed and capped on the west end of the parking lot. The rest of the lines were being dealt with during the demolition of the building.
They weren't gonna be removed, are they? Even in the parking lot area?
Uh, yeah, they were gonna be, I don't believe they go under the parking lot, I think they go up to the north, and they, the, yeah, the capping of those was already taken care of.
So when it's all done, we're just gonna have a big old grass field out there? Is the idea?
That's the idea.
Will this also be assessed to the owner?
I believe we are kind of looking into that possibility.
You can go either way, it could be assessed to the property owner. The, the discussion that we had, the, the original assessment was obviously the structure and the, and the dangerousness of the structure with this being included. It could also be assessed, or we could just assume those costs without assessing them, so it can go either way.
So doing this as an add-on doesn't change, like, we don't have to go through another blight vote and all of that stuff, it's?
No, with the building official deeming the parking lot unsafe, it falls under the same blight vote we've already taken.
Okay. I mean, yeah, I would almost encourage you guys to add it on, just in the off chance that it sells or goes to tax sale, or if there's any chance in us recouping any money, that, that's the only way to do it. But I understand if it doesn't get added on, just as a technicality. I move to approve the contract with Kansas Concrete LLC for parking lot removal at Atrium Hotel and Convention Center in the amount of $124,860 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, council comments. Garza?
You know, Councilman Bass, someday, can we start with somebody else?
Nope, I've, I've, they've coached me, and I'm just now getting, getting it right.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the office, audience for staying with us. Next time, bring pillows and blankets, you know, and thank you for hanging in there. I do want to say thank you to Pastor, Mr. Dale, he, he's a great citizen. Other than that, that's all I got.
All right, John?
Enjoyed the Christmas Night Parade. I think the fire department got robbed due to who was on the float with them, but I'll let that go. And I hope everyone has a good holiday, and I do appreciate everyone's patience tonight. That's all I got.
Can I say one more thing, Mr.?
No, your time's up. All right, you can, go ahead.
Merry Christmas to everybody, we don't get to see them.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Scott?
No, I don't have a lot. I just wanted to wish the HCC football team good luck tomorrow in Texas, and wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Stacy?
I want to thank you guys for your time and your consideration and your open and honest conversation about the worm farm. I never imagined in my wildest dreams we'd have a three-hour conversation about worms, but here we are. The fire department did get robbed because of who was on the float with them, so your judges were very partial. And I even told Chief Beer he could bribe me, and it didn't happen, so that, that was a negative point for them. Next year, if somebody brings me a hot coffee, they'll win. That's all I'm saying, the bar is very low. The parade was great, it was amazing to see everybody, everybody's efforts come together. I know it took a lot of planning, and it grew 25% from last year to this year. No telling where the parade will end next year. And thank you to the city staff, everybody who was a part of the, the floats, that was really cool to see, and PD and Fire, thank you for your participation. I'm sure I'm forgetting something, but it doesn't matter at this point, so that's it.
Same thing, Merry Christmas. I did want to mention that, if I haven't mentioned, that thanks to Senator Marshall and his handler Katie Sawyer, we have had contact with the railroad reference K-61 and 30th in the terrible way that that crossing looks, the underpass looks, or the overpass, and we will be fixing that. The railroad doesn't fix that, apparently, but we will. So, anyway, again, just a, just a thank you to those involved in, in helping push that forward. I, people do not understand how hard it is to work with the railroad. But anyway, Merry Christmas, and I appreciate knowing a lot more about worms.
I'll be officing out of the zoo for about two weeks during the city hall.
John, John, don't say it.
Oh, sorry, John.
Do not say it, John.
It's late, it's late.
I didn't say a thing.
No, you're good. We all, we all need some grace. It's Christmas, it's the Christmas spirit.
I can see your head just popping up in the little window.
There's, there's, we could, we could go on for hours.
I get to see little kids, like, who's the guy in there?
All right, Anne, I'm, I'm joining you, man.
Okay, we need 30 minutes in an executive session. Would somebody make a motion to reconvene at, what, nine, is it nine? What time?
It's 9:30.
Oh, at 10 o'clock.
At 10 o'clock.
I'll move to reconvene at 10 o'clock for the executive session.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Boss? Yes.
Yes.
Number eight, Paul Larisus. Are you at the charge, Jeff?
Should I say anything? Go to our seats, are we on camera?
We're sitting, we're sitting.
Okay, we have reconvened at ten o'clock and wish to extend for the same reason with the motion to recess for, to discuss personnel matters. Any idea how much time we will need for that?
Fifteen minutes?
You want twenty minutes?
Twenty.
Twenty minutes?
Okay.
I move to extend to ten twenty.
So move, or second?
I second it.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Meggars?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
We're ready, Paul.
You ready there?
Yeah, we're ready.
Yeah. Go to your seats, please.
Are we on camera?
Yes.
Chief, I have a question for you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn. Second.
Okay, just, just...
Do you know motion is second?
I heard three motions.
I think I have that. Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Meggers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
We are adjourned, thank you Council.